Well, if he's in the waiting room until you start the meeting, they don't show up.
Yeah, well, I'm recording. Hold on a second, Cliff, and we might have this. No, Robert started. So, waiting for Jerry. The meeting has started. Robert starts the attendee. Ah, Jerry. Sorry. Multiple panelists. Cliff, I think we're good. You got in. He's in. Thank you, Cliff.
All right, start the meeting.
You can.
Sorry about that. Thank you.
Okay, motion to start the meeting, please? All in favor? All right, welcome to the work session for the Village of Bamaranik Board of Trustees. We're holding the session at one sixty-nine Mount Pleasant Avenue in the village court with three trustees in attendance and trustee Victor for joining us by remote location. Starting the meeting, starting the meeting, we would like to motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
All in favor? All right, let's see if we can plow through this, folks. First, old business A, April eleventh came on. Expanded Florence Street Stormwater Investigation and Study. I believe I may have brought that on. That was, uh, what was that you did? With you, okay, so what do we want to do with this?
I thought we had at one point. We need to direct staff to, they already started to investigate the sanitary and stormwater sewer. Part of that's through the I and I program and part of that was just to see what's happening. Haven't, we haven't heard back from staff as to what needs to be done. But we need to put this on the agenda to undertake an engineering analysis and to solve the problems.
I'd like to suggest that maybe we put it on the to-do list for the new engineer when he arrives, like first thing, these people are more than since nineteen eighty-eight.
I'm wondering, Jerry or Dan, can you give us an update as to what we found to date?
Dan, go ahead. Tell them that we didn't find anything as far as prior. I guess easement or, or dedication to the village?
Yeah, so as far as the original paperwork that was provided to there was talk about sanitary sewers and the sanitary sewers, all that information is from the nineteen eighties, nineteen nineties. I believe that has been addressed. We worked with Rochester County on that in the mid-two thousands. They had studied on for savant engineers. And we reported everything from that as of around
No, I'm referring to, we found a manhole. We didn't know it's just and we put cameras in and whatever. So the question is, we know that there was a dip, you know, in the sewer line, and we know that there are issues with the drainage, the stormwater line. And so forward, where are we going from here?
So there was a question about whether or not there was an easement for a stormwater occurrence. I believe it was at two oh nine Jensen Avenue. And I looked at the records of ownership back to late eighteen nineties. And I couldn't find any record of any easement between any of the properties. I look, you know, with that, for each individual property owner, as a village of Bamaranik. I honestly, I think before nineteen oh one, you're looking at a a large file that it's nearly impossible to find anything in. So I could, I could locate any easements. Be able to village to maintain this sort of stormwater infrastructure at two oh nine Jensen.
All right, what I'm reading here, I mean, the two issues are catch basins and, and these odd culverts that, that run under people's property and they seem to I'm not quite sure. I've been over there. I don't quite sure what that is. Do we know? Do we know everything that's out there? Do we have a, an idea of what goes where and, and, or, or is that still need to be investigated?
Uh, it used to be investigated. I think, I think the park department did, did do some cleaning of some of those culverts. Is that, is that correct, Jerry?
Correct, yep.
So yeah, we did the best we could with.
So it's, so they're in backyards. They're in people's private property. They're in back.
Yeah, I, I saw that, but I mean, it clearly it was not installed. I don't know. It was not installed by a private owner. It comes in, it brings water into the property and through the property.
No, it drains water, it drains water from the backyards of these properties, which are sloped significantly and drains it away. We just don't have any record of the village ever doing it, or as David said, any kind of, uh, any kind of easement or, or commitment to the village of the property. And we just don't know. What we did was we found the manhole and we know that the pipe is full of dirt and the brick. But that's about it.
There had been stories, there'd been talk about the storm sewers pitched the wrong way. Is that not correct?
On Florence, there is one area when we had the three-inch rainstorm that collects, that's the lowest point of Florence. And that may be something that we look at when the new engineer comes in. But what specifically we're talking about with, with Hank and these properties and the neighbors along, along Florence and, and also Jensen is backyards, the backyard drainage structure somehow installed in their backyard that everyone believes the village put in, but there's no way for us to determine that.
All right, so what do we do with that? If we, if you don't know who owns it, I mean, we, I, I feel like we've got some kind of responsibility there to at least investigate it. Should we put it on the, the new engineer's to-do list that we would like a, some assessment or at least give those homeowners some guidance as to how to handle those, uh, those structures?
And that would be terrific, except the board has had issues with the village working on private property. And property that's not owned or dedicated by the village. There's been an issue with that. Just recently, we had that issue on email with Walton, which is a street that's not dedicated to the village. And there's a group of individuals from the Orient to Point Association that want us to fix that street, but it's a private street, so we're not touching it.
I would, I would be predisposed to approving or looking at these things with the permission of the individual property owners. Do you think that would be the?
I don't know that we can. There, there are a couple of things. Any lines that are, that the village owns, because I know there are lines from Frank to Florence that one of the reports showed that it was sagging. And I believe that was a sanitary line.
So that's different. That, that gets addressed in the next phase of the sewer remediation project. This is backyard drainage. Ponding and puddling of backyard drainage. This is what specifically this is.
So what I'm hearing is we, the village has done its due diligence in turn, search the records for easement.
Yeah.
But we would suggest that the village communicate to the property owners that they should also do a search of their own title for easements, because if it's in their title, then that may that may help the village try and figure out a way through this.
To do. Possible that they may have easements with one another. But I mean, that's.
No, I wasn't talking about with one another. I was talking about with the village.
So, so the question is, in, in whose lap does this land?
We can't do work on private property.
Can't do work on private property.
Right, so, um, but and we, unless we have an easement and we can't prove that we have the easement, is how old we think the pipes might be? Any? Is there any?
I mean, I think the area was developed in the early nineteen hundreds.
Yeah, and that was really, that was, that was, that was sort of swampland and cleared for the park. So the question is, when the village put the park in, did the village? I mean, it was definitely the village, not the town. Not town or.
Everything I was able to find as far as the historic ownership, it looks like it was it was developed around the late eighteen hundreds, early nineteen hundreds.
You're talking about the houses or you're talking about the park?
I'm talking about the general area.
The general area.
I, I think Nora is asking specifically about the park. Do we have, because that was done, we believe, by the village.
The question was, when do we think this may have I, I would ask that it was probably either sometime around it was first developed or probably shortly thereafter.
And the complaints start in the eighties. I see that.
The, 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 the information about the eighties dealt with sanitarys. That was not really flooding issues. The, like I said, we've got sanitary sewer issues have been addressed. We can certainly confirm that. I think we probably have to confirm that with our studies of the remaining areas that can certainly verify with Ken and Hogan. Uh, what type of issues we're seeing in that area. But the issues that were raised in the backup material, I believe have been addressed.
They have been addressed.
The, the sanitary sewer issues.
Okay.
Not, not the flooding issues, the sanitary issues.
Okay, well, all right. Listen, I think the, 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 at least, oh, oh, an advisory opinion from us about what, what, what the issue is and what should be done. If they're waiting for us to do something and we can't, they should be advised that that's not gonna happen.
We will let them know that it's best, it's in their best interest to try to find something that they may have in their records to indicate that there's some village involvement in this backyard drainage structure that.
Do they have a neighborhood association or something like that, Jerry?
No. Single-family homes, single, single property owners.
What I meant, I meant is, do they have a, a group that meets, uh, that, you know, to complain about the flooding or like?
So there's, there's a small group of individuals, but then some of the some of the property owners on that street have have maybe taken to filling up their backyard with, you know, bags of Home Depot topsoil to, uh, to eliminate or reduce the drainage, the drainage problem or the
Which is gonna move it elsewhere then, right?
Yeah, so that's where the problem is.
All right, um, I, I think we should do some kind of outreach to them and, 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 and tell them that we've done what we can. If they think we should do more, please stay in touch with us, but, uh, I mean.
And then, and then any issues of sanitary sewer or Florence on the street, that's something that we're actively working on. So we're looking at it, we're doing some video of it, and we're trying to determine, you know, where the issue is and why Florence ponds up and, and best standing water during a three-inch rainstorm.
Yeah, you heard, you heard trustee Nachas, what he was saying, but that should also be communicated, then we can, we can do that and take this off the, uh, the agenda of our, our work session.
I'm meeting, I'm meeting with one property owner on Florence on, I think Wednesday or Thursday with James.
Okay.
Who communicate that.
You know, that might be helpful. And I don't know whether we could figure out what the village did with Florence Park, whether we have, I don't think we have those kinds of records upstairs.
I mean, it's just strange stuff out there.
There is. It's very, it's cur, yes, very curious.
All right, so, um, let's, let's take this off the agenda for now then, and, and if it comes back on, it may become back on in a focused fashion for what, you know, what, what we're, what specifically we're looking at, all right? Okay, great. All right. One in a row. Draft policy, the item B, draft policy on acceptance of gifts to the Village of Bamaranik. This looks all sensible to me. I mean, anybody have any input on it?
I have a couple of questions. We can't, I mean, and this is probably for Augie. We can't, we, and I say like the Board of Trustees, volunteer boards and commissions, staff can't really raise funds for the village. That's not. So I, I, you know, when we have the, the phrase that says, no village official or employee shall, this is too far. No village official or employee shall engage in any fundraising activity or in any way solicit any person, group, or organization for the purposes of offering a gift to the village without prior knowledge of the village board and approval of the mayor. Well, I don't think we're supposed to be doing that. That just seems to me like we can't do that.
You want to just take that out then?
Well, I, I have a one choice.
Yeah, I'm just saying, like, so I'm trying to think of the, like, people will give us benches, you know, they'll want to donate a bench. We've had several scout projects, boy scouts and girl scouts who've done Eagle Award, Silver War, Gold Award projects where they've created something for the village and given it to them. Those are the kinds of instances where we probably should formally accept the gift. We always accept benches. We should accept it. I know the Arts Council has a fund that can accept donations, but they can't actually solicit the donation. So they've got, you know, they were able, that's how they were able to purchase sculpture. You know, from time to time, they're able to buy artwork and do projects in the village. So how do we phrase it? I mean, I think we, it's, it's not appropriate for the village board or the mayor to be approving these things.
Just take it out.
Privately.
Well, you just ended on the third, on the third sentence after the word village and just take the rest of it out. It says that you don't, you can't, but I have a more substantive question. Why are we doing this? I, I think it's nice that it comes to the board if there, somebody wants to donate to the village and it really does not put any particular individual at risk for somebody saying something is not correct. I sort of like that.
I recall this, a question being raised about acceptance of gifts. To the board, I mean, copy of the policy from my former municipality. And I produced some on the board, kind of reworded and tailored to the village of Bamaranik. Uh, sent back and asked to put that on the session for discussion.
But I, I, I thought our policy is if somebody wants to donate something to the village, you know, say it has to be accepted by the board. So what this is trying to do is bifurcate it. And saying that, you know, the village manager, anything of a hundred dollars or less is the village manager and the rest goes to the board. I just think it's better that everything come to the board and and it be for adding gift to the village period.
I, I think it's okay to delegate some stuff. I mean, under a hundred bucks, if it's, you know, why, why, why do we want to micromanage? Just me.
Well, because I, I think why I don't think there was any malice of intent of doing anything not correctly. There have been instances in, you know, over the years where things have been accepted by the village, either in cash or in kind. You know, and didn't get to the board.
Well, Jerry, what do you think about this?
I don't know of any instance in the last three and a half years, nor has staff ever told me of any instance like that in the past. From time to time, we do get at Christmas time, a tin of cookies or popcorn. That kind of stuff. Before we accept it, I can come to the Board of Trustees and ask them if it's okay if we accept a tin of popcorn. That's no problem. It's no difference to me how, uh, how you want to set this policy up. I just want it to be ridiculous.
So there was an email back in the trustee, the actions, and asked board attorney to have a bench nation on the agenda. Appreciate, uh, ask, uh, see, seeing that we do, if it's, if you're something on the phone, would appreciate your point me to the part of our code as applicable. Says, believe, uh, the church said, please, the acceptance of donations falls under general power. When the Board of Trustees, on management of which property was established, assumed to four dash four one two subsection one of village law. Trustee Lucas asked, should the BOT be approving donations in temporary such as Bamaranik High School, worker project to combat summer slide, the book of tours at West Windhoofs Park?
Right.
And I, I responded back, I don't think the board's ever established policy on acceptance of gifts. I know some places allow for the chief executive to accept gifts, but I have a little certain amount. The part of the sentence recognition of the gift and the gift giver in a public setting.
Yeah.
As I am attaching a copy from my former story, which was adopted in nineteen ninety-seven.
This is from Scarsdale, right? This is what Scarsdale has.
It seems fine to me.
I mean, I think it, you know, a hundred dollars, whatever. I, I mean, I think the thing about the Board of Trustees accepting a gift is that you're saying thank you. Like you're, somebody's giving us something, we say thank you. So even if the village manager can authorize something that's a hundred dollars, it's just nice to thank people for doing something nice for the village. I don't think that the, like, the popcorn tin fits in that. That's just like, you know, a Christmas gift. This is, this is more something that's like a, a village project. But however we do it, I think we have to get rid of three-one, because we shouldn't be consulting, people shouldn't be consulting informally with the mayor or the trustees. It probably should just, there should be a process, like if you want to make a donation, you know, if it's a boy scout or girl scout, they, there's a little form they fill out when they're doing their project. And it gets, the village manager gets it to the right, gets, I guess, gets it to the Board of Trustees. Most of those projects have gone through the parks, the parks department, parks director.
So, so we, uh.
There have been instances, for instance, on Florence Park, uh, some great gifts in terms of upgrading the park, but it never came to the board for approval. That's something that was just done, not done out of malice or anything. It was done as improvement. Private people, you know, did it in the village, actually dedicated resources to help that. I have no problems with it, except it never got to the board for approval, the same in Columbus Park and, you know, others.
All right, so, so are we good with this without the two, four, three, one?
I mean, I think we, we we leave two, four in up into gift to the village period. And then there need, does there need to be a procedure? Like, there's a, you want to give a gift to the village? Well, I mean, how do you do it? File something with the manager's office.
Yeah.
More work for Jerry and Dan.
I won't be sending them a note to thank them. Someone else will be doing it, but it's a good idea. It's a good idea. I agree.
Okay, great. All right, great. So, so we can, we can put this in a forum for the, for the, and on for, uh, the next meeting, I guess, right?
Yeah.
I'm all excited. We did two things. All right.
I'm good with it.
We're gonna put it on the regular August eighth meeting.
Great.
Yeah, August eighth is the next meeting, right?
Okay, old business C, village policy on releasing email addresses of residents via foil. To deal with that. Yeah, uh, uh, do we do it? Do we release, uh?
We redact email addresses? If it's not for.
I don't think we can.
We release.
You have to. You have to, it's required.
All right, so then there's no, there's no issue here, right?
Mark, is that correct?
I mean, it depends on the situation. If, if, if it would be redacted or withheld, it'd be the eighty-seven to be public pri, I'm sorry, privacy exemption to, uh, to foil. But it depends on the situation. Usually they are turned over. But there are instances in which, you know, they may not be. But I, but I can't again speak for every single instance.
We have any instance where it has been? Mark, are you aware of it? Dan, are you aware of it? Jerry?
Has been watched.
If we turn over citizen emails.
I can't recall any, no.
But we, we have, we have, we have.
We've released emails. I, I think maybe with Mark, might be saying, if someone if someone sent an email about an ongoing investigation some sort of a tip to the police department that's used for, that's for purposes.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, I, I'm not talking about specifically requests for just email addresses from the public that, that I don't think we've gotten that specifically. I'm talking about when, you know, there's a request for communication to to or from the board or, you know, some village official regarding an issue. You know, in that case, it probably would not be, uh, it probably, it may be turned over, depends on the situation. But yeah, Dan is right, that in certain situations in which, you know, for example, if there's a, an issue about a domestic dispute, not, not that I'm saying this has come up, but just for example, if there's an issue about a domestic dispute, if that did not end up in a, an arrest, or in, you know, depending on the situation, that email address would be withheld.
Who, who is the gatekeeper on that?
My office. We check with the village attorney.
And there was an instance before any of us were on the board where the previous mayor's distribution list was foiled and it had to be released, because there was around the same time some with maybe the turn only some court case or somebody had done, had, had foiled those all over Rochester County and they had to be.
Bottom line is we're just leaving it the way it is and it goes through the clerk and he's the gatekeeper. That's it.
Okay, fine with me.
Yeah. All right. If, if Tom has questions about that more, you can put it back on. April twenty-fifth, the FMAC recommendations. This is, uh, okay, these are requests from the flood mitigation advisory committee that trustee Nachas and chairman Gelber be liaisons. Going to ask the village attorney if we have the power to appoint liaisons to outside agencies. Is he, oh, he's not here. Mark, I'm sorry, oh, yeah.
If, I didn't, I need a little bit more time to review it, to review the question and answer. To look at the matter, or if you want to wait for, for Bob to come in.
I think he's written.
I think you know, in relation to your question, if you look at the last paragraph, changes, it keeps the intent of the, of what FEMA, FEMA could wanted, but it also includes what the board wanted, which was the village manager to be involved in.
I think, I think the, what, what we had with the mayor's intention was that the village manager is the liaison.
And I run the project. That's correct.
So, uh, so this, this would be going beyond that, so we'd have to, before we even address it, we'd have to ask the, the village attorney if we can even do it. Because I don't think we have the power to do that.
Liaison, and that, and that, and that's what the last paragraph does.
Okay, well, uh, let's wait for. All right. Leaf blower, we're not down to Eena. Leaf blower ban signage communication, May ninth. What is that in reference to?
At the beginning of the leaf blower ban season, which is May fifteenth, the Committee for the Environment asked us for some signage and communication. As is the history with the Board of Trustees' agendas, things take a little while to get to. So this one is somewhat irrelevant and probably way past its time.
I, 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 I did see electronic signs that were.
Yeah, and it may be way past its prime, but we could always be positive and say it's for twenty twenty-three. Okay, like we're done, like we don't put it back on the agenda. So what, didn't one year we actually distributed a leaflet?
No, you would put on door hangers. And, and that was very effective and a lot of residents have
Got a lot of good feedback on it.
That that might be helpful, because a lot of people ignore other types of communication.
And when we did that, I mean, one of the things, the town of Bamaranik did that, and they used a bunch, the girl scouts as a service project. So we could, I mean, all, Ryne X schools do community service projects, so it's something we could probably get, you know, help with, not necessarily have village staff do it, but get it, do it as part of a service project, which we also promoted a little bit. You know, like you do a public service announcement. And do, do our dates coincide with the town and the village of Larchmont too? So it could be like all three groups doing it together.
That's a good idea.
And.
Something we do annually, and that's the process. And if they want to recommend changing some of the language, of course, they can, you know, our boards, I mean, our volunteer committee, but if you want to do that on a regular basis, we can easily create that process.
Door hangers do we need?
Oh, I mean, we're talking about five thousand rooftops, so we'll go at it, you know, and send a lot out.
Yeah, okay, so, so there's a cost involved in that, right?
Yeah, but, but we, we're not, we're not going door to door in, you know, Oriente with these, you know, large properties. We're not doing that kind of stuff. So we would be going door to door in most of the area. You know, most of our area is, is easily walkable.
Okay.
Right, it's not very, yeah, it's not, it isn't expensive.
All right, so we'll put this on for, um, I guess we don't, this is urgent.
Twenty twenty-three.
But I mean, you know, I guess the thing, it's a great idea. Somebody should. So who's the somebody? Do we, do we see if the Committee for the Environment want to be in charge of it, or is it something?
I, I think it needs to be built into the budget.
Yeah.
Yeah. And they're, and they're very, they're very into this. They, they, yeah. All right. So, um, so what, what, what are we doing with, do we?
I mean, does it need, do we need to adopt? I mean, I think it would be good to do it with the other two communities. And I'm happy to write a note to the other communities. We, if we do it, did it with the other two communities and we were ready for next May.
Yeah, so then, then why don't we, why don't we give it to the, 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 uh, Community for the Environment, ask them to, to reach out?
Let, let them do that, but I think what we need to do is direct staff. Let, let them do that, but I think what we need to do is direct staff, you know, this should be included in the preparation twenty twenty-three, but.
Well, it's, I mean, it's a nominal amount of money. It's, we could probably figure out how to print it this year. We could probably figure out how to fund it this year.
I don't know if you recall this, Jerry, but. At the onset of the pandemic.
Yeah.
We had talked to three municipalities about trying to send their unified measures drop landscaping. And, and our respective people lands, and it was, I don't think we can, we, we had trouble agreeing on common language when we, we missed.
Well.
It was a Larchmont, but Dan, that was because of Larchmont. There's Larchmont as much, they have stricter rules. You know.
They're always just.
We are similar to the town. Larchmine is a little, little more street.
Alright, so I'm just looking for a disposition here. What do we?
I don't think it's something, so from my perspective, I don't think it's something that has to go on to a regular work session.
Okay.
It's not something we have to vote on. We, we asked the committee for the environment to. If they're interested in taking it over, working with staff, and if they're not, then, then we go to plan B.
I guess as liaison to the community environment, that's much that I have to do that.
Yes.
When I forget, everybody can yell at me.
I'll remind you.
Yeah, we, we, we already know what printing costs are. We, we know that we need to reach out at a certain, you know, period of time or a certain month date. To, to solicit volunteers. We know what the, what we. Put it in the budget and we'll, we'll make it work, of course.
And we're going to try and do it ourselves, not with the other communities, right?
Well, it, you know, I mean, it's. It's easier if we just do it ourselves, but I will, I think we should let the other environmental committees of those villages, the town and the village, know what we're doing. If they want to, you know, if they want to jump on or if we want to adopt something that, that they're doing, then that's the discussion, not necessarily doing it simultaneously at the same time.
Okay, got it. Alright. Alright, alright, so that's.
I may have said this before, one or two meetings, but I don't really care about the village of Maranick, so I may have said that once, once.
I'm with you. Alright, composition of traffic safety commission membership.
That was you.
That's me. Oh, that's me. Yes, okay. That was, we can't, what, what happened? So, uh, uh, an issue came up where somebody was missing. And they have seven members and we only had six members for a while. And when I looked into, in the code, it said, the traffic commission shall consist of seven members. I said, well, and, and the discussion was, we're, we're down a member. We need another member, right? And I'm like, we can kind of do it with six people. It's not, it's not like. So I looked and I said, well, is it even valid if it says seven people? It's got, does it have to be seven people? So I suggested that maybe that it be no more than seven people with three being a, a, a quorum.
I think the problem with that is in most boards and commissions, you have to have a set, unless it's an ad hoc, you have to have a set number for the forum. And so in order to meet, you have to have a quorum, which is typically, like the default quorum is one more than fifty percent, and that's why committees are usually. Uneven numbers, they're odd numbers for a purpose. So I think it's considered a public body and it has to comply with the open meetings law. They have to have a forum to meet. So you can't just have a floating forum.
Well, not, not a floating forum. You, you, you establish a forum at three and you say that, that it can have no more than seven members.
But, but.
Rather than designating at seven period. Because if, because if it's only got six, is it the traffic commission?
A quorum, but a quorum of three isn't fifty per, isn't one plus, isn't fifty percent plus one. And that's usually, it's usually more than half of the members of the body.
Okay, okay, so then a forum for that, whatever.
I mean, there's a reason that, there's a, so, so there's a reason that.
Okay, you change that, change that number there, but I, I think it needs to be more specific than, I mean, mean, it means that no more than seven with a quorum being four.
Right, but then if you only have four people, everybody has to come and meet. I mean, I, I think normally you set the number of people who are on boards and commissions. So I think having a fungible number is unusual.
In the code, it also says if somebody is not able to serve for whatever the reason.
Yeah.
For three meetings.
Well, that, that's, that's, that's a separate item.
That, that, that's if the village manager is supposed to, the chair is supposed to talk to them, then the village manager is supposed to.
That's, that, that, we might as well bring that up too. I think that's.
But, you know, it, you can't just change one committee and saying, well, a minimum of three or a minimum of four. It, it, it's, the quorum is majority, otherwise, if there are, let's take it, for instance, Lou.
The question is, do you have to have seven members? You have to have seven members, that's the question.
You could set a number of five. I think it's unusual, unless it's an ad hoc committee. When you form a board or commission, the number of the members is generally prescribed.
Yeah, so just say no more than seven, seven is the max.
The number is prescribed.
If it's no more, that, that means you can have less and you don't want to have less. If somebody isn't performing, that, that's an issue to be taken up. To get, you know, to be replaced, but otherwise, it, it. Otherwise you set yourself up for trying to play games and I don't think, I don't think that's your intent at all.
I think, I think somebody could say, it's not the traffic mission, you don't have seven people. You can't, you can't do anything.
Yeah, let's, let's take the board of appeals.
No, 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 that's not about the traffic commission, that's what we're talking about.
No, but it applies to everybody, but what, just let me finish. You know, any board, you know, any of the land use board say, if somebody is missing, understand we don't have a full quorum. If you don't want, you know, we, we have, we can proceed because we have. Number of people necessary to start, but if you don't want to proceed until you have a full board, you have that right to defer. And that's true, and that's for, that's true.
In the traffic commission, it says, the traffic commission shall have seven members. Alright, there were only six.
Only six active members.
Right. Just to the, to the, the, the other situations. But let's say we decide not to fill the seven, we don't, we don't have a person we want to put on.
That.
Want to let it run and run six for a while.
Continue until you fill it.
Right.
Not, no difference than any other committee or commission we have.
If, if you, if, if, if you only have six members of the traffic commission.
Alright, no more than, just seems more precise. If you want to leave it in precise, we'll leave it in precise.
It's not imprecise.
Oh, it is. Yes, it is.
Seven.
It's seven.
And you have seven members of the traffic commission, so a quorum, a quorum is four.
Is that worth, no, no, we're talking about.
They can meet as long as they have four.
Right, we got, we're done, alright.
Can we go back to D?
Let's, let me see, hang on. Yeah, let's go back to the, Bob, does this board have the power to appoint liaisons to outside agencies?
I think I answered that question a couple of meetings ago.
I did, I remember, that's why I'm asking you again.
Village law appointments are made by the mayor.
So we're done.
For, for, appointments to boards and commissions are made by the mayor.
It's the appointment to boards, commissions, committees, everything. I know I researched this question. And that's my recollection. I don't know if I wrote it down and put it in a memo.
I don't think so. But not, not two weeks ago, did you do it previously?
I remember. That's why, that's why I brought it up.
So what is proposed? In the motion that is at the bottom of the page, is not, is not using the word liaison. It's using the word coordinator. And we have many discussions by different member, you know, community to whatever. I believe it is perfectly in order.
And this says that appoints trustee Natchez, liaison Natchez, FMAC chair along with the village manager's office.
Along, along with the chair of the, along the village manager and the chair of the. FEMA.
An outside agency, I don't, I don't, I don't see it to happen.
Again?
I don't, I don't see that we have the authority to do that. I mean, it's, it's nice that the FMAC recommended that, but they can recommend a lot of things. I don't think we, they could, we.
I think it's perfectly within our authority.
Sorry, I missed your question.
The question, the question that has been raised, is it within our authority or not within our authority to appoint coordinator to the core or anybody else?
A what? A coordinator or a liaison?
Uh, it's the word, the word is coordinator in the motion that is suggested, not the FEMA motion, the motion that is suggested is part of the agenda.
There'll be an employee of the village, a coordinator?
Jerry, you need to read the resolution. Would you like me to read it?
It's, I, I, I think, I think it's a nonstop. I don't.
What's the title? What's the title? Coordinator or the liaison? Liaisons are appointed by the board.
Designates trustee liaison Natchez, the FEMA committee chairman, along with the village manager's office. As the coordinators of the village with the sponsors of the Army Corps project, the village manager's office will be responsible for working with the ACC, with the.
AC.
Army Corps of Engineers on specific construction implementation activities.
Alright, so you're already all the liaison for the flood committee and Tony Gelber is already the chairperson, so you're, you already have that authority as liaison. And then I'm the coordinator. With the Army Corps. I don't know if you need a resolution for stuff, for something that's already in place.
There's been discussion about that and therefore there, FEMA recommended this to the board and I've massaged it a little bit to be more inclusive so that the village manager. Authority is not diluted.
FEMA recommended it?
No, the, the, the flood mitigation, was, what was the vote? What was a five one one or? Like that. Victor, what do you think?
My, my. I, I recall that something like this happened five years ago when the Army Corps of Engineers project was being approved. I think the goal is to have a flowing communication between the manager, the board, the Army Corps and the, and the. Committee, which has been working, many of the, of the members have been working for, for many, many years.
I agree with that.
So, so as, that I think is, is the purpose of this. So maybe if, instead of making it an appointment, we just make it a recommendation or, or, or we, we just stress the need. For, for, for that flow of communications to, to be.
Not a good idea.
To be effective, yes. So, so turn, turn, turn the resolution into, into kind of a request that we urge, we encourage. You know, that to, to happen, because precisely I think there's another item today, that, that.
Yeah.
That, that's where kind of it falls. How in practice do we, do you play this out? So I do think. In, as, as in the past, and there, that was as heated or even more than it was today. And why everybody coming together and the board allowing space and opportunities for the. Blood mitigation to meet with the Army Corps and to have that really turn out into a positive outcome, but we need to do the same now. So, so turn that probably into, into, into a recall, we request, we urge, so however you want to phrase it. I think that's, that's the origin behind it and there's this good precedent that happened, that happened before.
Uh, thank you, Victor. Jerry.
That works. See, well, Victor, Victor nailed it because Lou, what's, what, what works is the fact that. No matter who is the liaison appointed to the flood mitigation committee, there's a strong resolution and a strong desire from the board. Urging everyone to communicate, to be involved together, to be cohesive in their approach and thoughts. Because the boards of these committees and, and our committees, the village committees and permissions change all the time. They can change annually.
Would it be, would it be, I mean, would you be able to schedule periodic meetings with the committee and, and Dan? And maybe somebody from the, from the, from the core if they would, if they would appear?
Yeah, so the way, yeah, so the way I would approach that is to see what the core wants to do as far as regular meetings. And then, of course, we make ourselves available. So it would be the flood mitigation liaison, flood mitigation committee liaison, the chairperson, whether it's Tony or someone else. Dan, Dan Sonoff, my partner and myself. And the four of us would meet with the core on, on their schedule. So basically when they think, or when they thought it would be the best time to.
And trustee, trustee Natchez would be included in that as liaison to the FMAC?
As a, as, when he's still the liaison for FMAC.
Okay, great, right. Well, that seems, that seems reasonable.
This goes a little bit further than that.
What?
There are different levels of the core for communication. You know, and that's why the resolution was structured the way it is. So that we can, and, you know, to the extent that anybody has contacts, and I have a lot of contacts at various levels. To try and help move things forward faster. That's the whole, that, that's the whole point of this. It's not to take away anybody's responsibilities or activities, it is to try and foster moving things as quickly and as meaningful as we can. Because everybody says and knows that flooding is a big issue here.
But we come up against.
So I, I, I don't know why anybody would be opposed to, you know, doing anything that would foster that.
Well.
I, I think it's great for the liaison, but we come up against the reappointment, or the appointment of the FMAC liaison in December.
And at that point.
Whoever that person is.
That, that would be, and that would be changed to, at that point.
Alright, so, 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 okay, so. What, what's the, I mean, what's the issue? Then, I mean.
Take the names out, take the names out and just use titles and then there's no issue.
That's fine.
Fine, yeah, because Victor's urging, changing what Victor recommended is, is, is perfect.
Okay, so why don't we say trustee's liaison, just take the last paragraph, which says motion, change it to trustee liaison. Of. FEMA. The chairman, the FEMA chairman, along with the village manager office as coordinators of the village with the sponsors of the.
No, you gotta, you gotta take it accordingly.
Jerry, just let me finish, please.
I'm sorry, I didn't know.
And the village manager's office be responsible for working with the ACE on specific construction implementation activities. Reason for the latter is that is where most of the activities are going to take place. You know, and that is something that should be vested with, with your office, period.
A coordinator. A coordinator is a staff member of this organization. Anyone coordinating anything is on the public payroll. If we use the terms that Victor uses where it is urged that the trustee liaison, the chairperson of the, of FEMA, of FMAC. And the village manager work together with the urging, all of those things is a good idea. When you use the word coordinator. That's a position in the village. That's how I see it. And maybe Bob has a different opinion.
I disagree, but I appreciate your, 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 your position.
Imploys a management responsibility.
Yeah, so, so I, I think what we're talking about is, we're talking about communication, not authority.
Right. And communication is, is really, it's really a good idea. It's a really good, you know, potential. I think what it should be, is it should be reworked. To use communication urging, since it's very different from what I think the, the, the flood mitigation has presented. If it's going to change significantly, then it should go back to the flood mitigation committee for that discussion.
We can take it from here. I think they've, they've made themselves clear. Victor, Victor, would, could you write a, a proposed?
But let's do it right now, but let's, it's.
I mean, Victor's an attorney, he could, he could do it.
Because the motion, even the motion above it, from Dave Finch says appoints trustee Natchez. Right? So, so appointing the trustee and the chairperson as liaisons for the village. Is already done. That, that's already done, you know, Dave Finch is correct. They get appointed to work with the flood mitigation committee. But then coordinators is, is like Dan said, management responsibility, definitely, you know, within the authority of the village manager.
Okay, so why don't we do this?
Okay.
The village of Maranick.
Board of trustees designate.
No, the urges.
Oh, let me finish.
We're not designating anything.
Urges is the right word to use.
All would just let me finish. You may be happy with what I want to suggest.
Okay.
The village of Ramaric designates trustee liaison of the FEMA. The FEMA chairman along with the village manager's office to urge. To urge and work with. Uh, the sponsors of the A C E project in the village manager's office be responsible, working with the A C E on specific construction implementation activities.
Alright. So change designates to recommend in the first sentence and you've got it, you've nailed it. Think you nailed it.
It's, the board doesn't recommend, the board takes an action. It either says to do this or not to do this. It's not recommending anything.
Well, the motion is to recommend something and then it gets voted on, isn't it?
It's a recommendation to be voted on. You are absolutely correct.
Yeah. The village board of trustees recommends trustee liaison, uh, F M A C chairperson and the village manager's office. Urging, right, to work with the sponsors of the A C E project.
How about determines instead of recommend? So the village of Ameritic Board of Trustees determines that F Mac trustee liaison and F Mac chairman along with the village manager's office. And then do the urging words.
Right, so determines and designates is the same thing. I think what Victor was to, to convey is that. It's recommended and it's something like a process. That should be implemented where the liaison, the, the, the F M A C chairperson and of course, you know, Dan and I. We work closely.
And that's why the last part of the resolution is there. That, that, that doesn't take away anything from that.
The other part about the recommend is it's also establishing the change communication between the core.
Correct.
E C and the village. I don't think this board can direct the core. And or the state D E C on their communication.
No, that, that's not there. They, they'll do whatever they want to do. That, this is what the village is trying to do.
Hey, how about this? We direct the village manager. To, um, uh, to, uh. Uh, facilitate. Open communications. With the Army Corps of Engineers. Regarding, uh, regarding the flood mitigation part, project. Designating. Um, designating the F M A C chair and trustee liaison as, um, as point people.
That. I'm sorry, that doesn't do what the intent is.
When it's sitting and, and designed a project with them, that's not going to happen.
And that's why that the last part of the paragraph is there. That said, that, that responsibility is very, very specific to the village manager's office.
I think, I think what we need to say is that you want to, that the F M A C, oh, we want to keep you guys in the loop so you can, you can provide feedback. That's, that, that's basically it. So you know what's going on.
It's, it's more than that. And, and I'm sorry, I disagree with.
Well, if it's more than that, it's too much.
The village of Ramaric Board of Trustees. Fine, I understand it. What was your word, uh, instead of designate or that you had suggested?
Determines.
Determines.
It's the same. Recommends is, recommended is a, a stronger word in what Victor was asking us to consider. If you want to. Last time, it worked, it worked last time. I think it could work again.
You want to take a swing at it, Victor?
I don't have the text in front of me, but it's, it's just a request. It's, it's a request and we urge, yeah, that this happens. Just turn that language of.
Okay, okay, we can, that, that works. Here we go. The village manager, um, board of trustees requests, using your language. Trustee liaison of the FEMA, the FEMA chairman along with the village manager's office. Uh, urge and work with. The sponsors of the A C project. Urge moving forward. Uh, and continue with the rest and, um, uh, and the village manager's office be responsible for working with the A C E on specific construction implementation activities.
Specific or all?
So.
Not all, all construction implementation activity.
Yeah, all is better than specific.
Yeah, it works better. We're getting there.
Okay, I don't, I have no problem with that introduction. Okay. So let me, let me read it one more time, see if everybody is, um, understands it and then if anybody's on board, we'll move forward. If not, we won't. Okay. The village of Ramaric Board of Trustees requests trustee liaison. The, I'm sorry, the FEMA trustee liaison, the FEMA chairman along with the village manager's office to urge moving forward and work with. The sponsors of the A C E project and the village manager's office be responsible for working with the A C E on all construction implementation activities.
Right, so the liaison and the chair shouldn't work with the manager's office. The urge to, we have to replace that work with, with something else.
No, that's what we want to do. We all want to work together, Jerry.
Communicate, stay in the, stay in touch.
We're all in the boat together, Jerry.
Yep.
So that's, that's the motion. I'd like to propose that and so move if there's somebody want to second that, so we can.
Can we read it one more time just to clarify?
The village of Ramaric Board of Trustees requests trustee liaison of the FEMA. The FEMA committee chairman along with the village manager's office to urge moving forward and work with. The sponsors of the A C E project and the village manager's office be responsible. Working with the A C E on all construction implementation activities.
I think request and urge is redundant.
And, and works with indicates that the trustee liaison and the FEMA chairperson actually has a, a, you know, management responsibility. And I think urge, urge increase communication, urge repetitive communication, urge quarterly communication.
Yeah.
Something.
Urge moving forward. That's what we're trying to do.
Yeah, yeah, that's good. That urge moving forward is good. Um, uh, communication with the sponsors of the A C E project and the village manager's office. Be responsible for working with the A C E on all construction implemented activities. I think the communication part, um, is good because the, out of communication comes information, potential ideas. Uh, you know, those kinds of things, a little bit of guidance potentially. Uh, but works with designates two, two, you know, one part-time employee, uh, elected employee. Uh, and one, uh, volunteer as, as a, with, with management responsibilities in the project. That may be a little.
They don't have management response. Like, you're, I think you're, you're reading something into it for whatever the reason. That is not there. And I appreciate your concerns, but that's not there. That's why the specifics of the construction, that is. Why it's, that is there. So, with it, anyway.
How about communicate and collaborate?
Yeah, hold on.
Yeah.
There you go. Communicate and collaborate. That's it.
Communicate, collaborate works.
There you go.
Thank.
Communicate, that, that's much cleaner.
The lawyers have the words, Lou. They have the words.
So are we saying the village of Ameritic Board of Trustees requests F Mac liaison?
Trustee liaison.
F Mac trustee liaison and F Mac chair.
Along with.
Along with the village manager's office. Communicate and collaborate to.
Forward, yeah.
Move to move the project, but communicate and collaborate with the sponsors of the ACE project.
Yeah.
Just do it that way, so.
Okay. Yeah, so. And just change specific to all down below.
And, yeah.
I can live with that.
Um, it seems to me that, that, that village manager should, should, should be the one being. At the top there because, uh, because the FEMA and, uh, and, and, and the liaison don't, aren't connected with the project.
So, alright, so let's try this.
Connected with it.
The village of Ameritic Board of Trustees requests that, this might even be better, that the village manager's office. Collaborate with trustee, with F Mac trustee liaison and F Mac chair.
There you go.
To. Communicate, I may have used collaborate before, communicate and collaborate with the. Sponsors of the A C E project and the manager's office. This is like a little.
Forget about his manager's office and the manager's office for all construction.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I'm, I'm appreciative of that, but that's not going where both, both the committee came from and what I'm suggesting.
That's why it should go back.
And I think that's, that's part of the issue.
Yeah.
And, and, and that's, and that's what I hear, you know, and for whatever the reason it is, I think Jerry is concerned that he's being undermined and that's not the case at all.
Well, I know.
No, the, no, village law and, and my position, I'm not concerned about that. I, I'm, I'm on firm standing of, of my responsibilities. And, and my, uh, um, um, authority with, with projects in the village. I have no problem with that. I just, if it's not clear, then we all think it's something else.
I think it's very clear the way, the way it was proposed.
Yeah, well, I, I, I think it's clear too.
Just, just change it around, I think limits the potential of communication and that's part of the problem.
I think, and I'll be honest with you, I, I think, let me, let me finish. I, I think what, what we're doing here is letting too many cooks into the kitchen or screw it up.
Well, I think it's hard to write something.
Yeah.
That it's hard when five people are trying to write something at the same time.
He's right, he's right.
Um.
But if, if it's a substantive change, it's probably fair that it goes back to the F M A C board for that discussion. Now, they may just say, no, send it back the way we wanted it, but you know, that's not.
But we're, we're free to do what we want. We don't have to take their recommendation.
We don't have to go back to the F M A C.
Yeah.
I'm happy to bring it back, but I don't think that's the point. Their, their, their feelings are, are representative.
I'm perfectly, perfectly happy to accept or reject their, their advice. I mean, so, um.
This is a board decision.
Or decision, exactly. And I, I don't think it's a good idea.
I, I think we're so close, we already had a text by, by re drafting it at the last minute and we. We were there.
But, but Dan's not happy.
This has been on, this has been on for a couple of months now. Uh, you know, everybody's had this, you know, to say that, you know, if you don't want to focus on it, that's fine. I, I've made the motion. Does anybody want a second?
We, I don't know what the motion is, Dan. We gotta.
You're right. I mean, it's been here since April twentieth and you, you're, you're a hundred percent right that it's been here since April twentieth.
No, and, and the core is moving on. So e- either we do that, we either get on board or we don't get on board. That's all.
No.
Let me, I'm, you know, I'm going to work on the language for a couple of minutes. Want to go on to the next thing and let me try and make this up? Okay?
Articles and procedures for removal of volunteer board members and commissioners. It's a G that this was, um, what, uh, you alluded to earlier when we had a, a member of the. Uh, traffic commission who, um, had just stopped coming to meetings and, um, we, uh. Wanted to get rid of him, but, um, the, the code says that, uh, that the only the village manager can do that. After he misses three meetings and has a conversation with him. So he never returned Jerry's calls, so there was never a conversation. So he was never removed. That's how this, that's how this whole thing started. So dragged on and on and on. And I think we need to correct that. It's got to be, uh, we, I think. All these people serve at, at the board's pleasure and can be, uh, put on or removed by the board and it, it shouldn't be a, a, um, a tortuous, uh. Procedure for removing people.
Just change instead of saying that, uh, after a conversation, after Phil's attempts to have a conversation. So if nobody answers, he, you just, you just go on.
Let's, um, uh, let's, uh, let's take a look at the, can we, can we change that rule? You want to, um, look at it?
If you're going to consider changing it, the village manager doesn't have, nor do I ever, or would ever get involved in any kind of appointment. So this is a board function.
Yeah.
They put people on these boards. Why not adopt the same function or the same process that you put people on and to take people off? You can report.
That'll come up later too, but, um.
When this law, when this law was adopted, the, the theory was that it was, um. Awkward for a trustee liaison to have a conversation with a volunteer. So the trustee liaison, or so the chair of the committee was asked to. Yeah, talk to the village manager. The village manager has a conversation with the trust, with the, with the member who is not able to, and this is only for people who can't attend. This isn't for anything else. And if, and if, and if it's, if they have the conversation and this person, you know. Had extenuating circumstance and promises to come or says they can come, the behavior will change. The board, then that's what the manager reports back. But then, but that's how the removal can be. And, um, obviously if you've been trying to contact somebody who did not get in touch with you. That person is not going to be able to change their behavior and is not going to come. And that's been going on. So I think that that's, you know, you might change the law for that regard, but I think bringing it back to having the board trustees vote on removing people. Is probably not the best idea. And this is only people who don't show up at the meetings.
And that's the other thing. There's got to be other reasons that you'd want to take somebody off the board.
I don't really think we should be going there, but you know, you might just not like somebody. I don't think.
Or whatever. Maybe they're disruptive.
I, you got appointed to a board for, for a term. Some people don't get reappointed, but I, I'm not sure that we should be.
These are not Supreme Court seats. I mean, they're, they're a voluntary appointments. I mean, they, I mean, they should be. Um, what about arrest drunkenness? Uh, you know, I mean, there's, I mean, there's got to be, there's got to be some language there for, for removal. Moving people, just not showing up is the only thing. That's got to be the, the most secure gig in the world.
Somebody gets arrested, we want to remove them from a border commission before they've had a trial. I, I think this is not going, I, I, I don't think we should be. Talking about removing people from boards and commissions. I don't see.
That's our job, isn't it?
I, it's our job to appoint people to boards and commissions.
Well, later on, we're going to, you're going to talk about removing them also.
No, we're talking about.
The authority to remove them.
It, which is specific to planning board and zoning board members and it's, it's in New York state law. It's not, it's not, it's not.
It's.
Our law.
Well, I just thought we'd be consistent. Um, but, uh, there, there's that glaring, uh, problem there. So I would, uh, could, could we, um. Uh, can, can somebody draft a, a new version of this with, with some, with some suggestions of, about how we could change the, uh, that process? With the, the proper legal wording? Bob? Maybe with some suggestions about, uh, about, you know, causes for removal or, uh.
Be happy to draft it. Just give me some substance of what it is that you want.
Well, what, what we want is, in other words, um, right now it says, if you look at it. Um, it says, uh, the only way somebody can be removed is by not showing up. Um, and it would appear to me that there must be other boilerplate, uh, language for a removal of, of people for conduct.
I don't think that's accurate to say that. This is the only way you can be moved is if you don't show up. This, uh, provides a mechanism by which you can move without a hearing and. You know, the mayor's, involving the mayor's power to remove.
Understood.
The idea when this was adopted was to. Uh, provide some feedback and then process. By which, issue of non attendance. The questions are, I think, that you need to answer before we draft something are. Do you want to? Uh, either narrow or broaden the range of. Uh, issues for which a board member can be removed. I don't want to say automatically, it's not automatic.
Yeah.
That, here. And. Who you want to do it? And how do you want to accomplish this? If someone, what is it, what is a? What is it that establishes that a board or committee or commission member is not doing what he or she is supposed to do? And. And who do you want to address that? Those are the issues.
Okay, so with the, right now, the manager addresses it uh at the suggestion, what of the chairman?
Yeah.
Yeah, so um the chairman.
Really accurate. It's a report.
Report that he just just got, somebody's not showing up, right? So um uh if, let's say. The the bulk of a of 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 the commission of commissioners or board members find what one person does to be particularly uh egregious. That could be uh uh and there there must be other things other than not being there.
Remember, there's always, there are always other ways of, the ways of dealing with situations that will be on with the sets. This deals with specific issue of non attendance.
Got it.
Other board members feel that someone is. Egregiously abusing office or. You know, whatever. You can always ask the village board, do something, ask the mayor to remove that person.
Okay. Under- understood.
We, I mean, we don't have, we haven't, I mean, we, we don't really have a mechanism for that.
Right. That's true.
For for removing.
Need a mechanism for that to remove.
That's, that's your call.
I was saying. Saying in order, thanks, Bob. In order to do that, we would have to provide a mechanism in the code as my my question. Or could we just say, well?
Well, if you, if you want to have a formal way of doing it, you have to provide that mechanism.
Alright.
If you want to rely on. You know, goodwill and gee, if you people don't think I'm doing a good job, maybe I should resign, then you don't need a mechanism. If you want to do it to somebody as an informal process, then you don't need a mechanism. Well, here even this.
I mean.
Want to avoid a situation where if somebody, if the majority does happen to like somebody's views, say, get rid of them that that. People are put on there for reasons, okay? Uh, either their expertise, their knowledge, their desiring to serve, whatever, that there's a myriad of reasons.
Absolutely.
That's because one doesn't happen to agree with another, there's no reason to remove somebody.
Well, nobody's suggesting that. I mean.
But but.
The thing, the thing that got me was that was that uh this person hadn't hadn't been attending for a long time. So I figured he he's gone, right? But then I find out that, no, he's not gone because this procedure hasn't, so there's, suddenly there's this formal procedure. I said, well, can we just appoint somebody else to take this guy's place? No, because he's still on the board. He's still on the commission. Well, can, how, how can we get rid of it? Well, hopefully Jerry can do that after a conversation. And now, you know, and I had some folks, well, where are we gonna get our other commissioner? I says. I thought he was gone, you know? I mean, I I didn't know that you had that, that it was like, you know, I felt like I was dealing with a Supreme Court justice or something. So.
So, in this particular case, what I gather from what I'm hearing is Jerry tried to contact them. He wouldn't return the phone calls. I I think then.
That's correct.
That's correct. If you could simply change the word in the code from. Um, uh, conversation to communication.
Or.
He can write him a letter and say, if I don't hear from.
Yeah, yeah, notify. Maybe, maybe you can notify them.
Uh, I I I tried to talk to him and he never called back, so I'll just throw him off. What's the big deal? I don't know.
So, uh, uh, listen, what struck me was.
Thought we should have had a conversation about it. We're having a conversation now.
Yeah, and and it was, it was suggested to me that I look at the code, I look at the code, the code seemed wanting, so I brought it up. That was it.
Well, he would have called me back if he wanted to stay on. So what's, you know what I mean?
I know, but maybe he could say that, I don't want to belabor this. It just seemed overly overly complex for a guy that didn't show up at the at a traffic.
Language of the code. So what do we want to do with this? Do we want to have?
Consult.
Member, the chair and the member. If the village manager reaches out to the member and the member refuses to call back. I mean, I think that satisfies the requirements of consultation.
Okay.
Probably a pretty good indication. The member's not gonna show up either.
Okay, should, can, should we put that in the code or is it just to find the way it is? Is it implied?
Okay. I don't think it's necessary. I think the village manager, this is the case.
The authority.
That satisfies the code requirements.
Okay, great. Alright. You answered my question. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Alright. H.
Want to hear, I I think I, I think I might have gotten this right. Okay?
Alright.
So.
Can you put it up, can you put it up on the board?
No. I'm not on soon. No, no, I can, I can email it to Dan.
Can you project it out to the wall?
No, I cannot. No, I cannot.
Email it to Augie, he can put it on.
Can I email it to Augie?
He can email it to me and I can put it on.
Okay, great, great.
Why don't we do H while that's being done?
Okay.
Keep moving forward. You're on a roll.
Yeah.
You want to be vice chair?
Justin also, he wants to read.
Yeah, Lou, right, yeah, so, so I have, you know, take a look at both. You can put one up first and then the other one. Put mine up first and then and then Nora, but Nora, Nora's got, I think Nora's got the right, the right idea.
Okay, so.
Thank you.
Alright, so, or I guess we're up now. Okay, so never mind.
Now, Lou, read this, if you can see it. I don't know if you can see.
Okay, alright, here we go. The um um motion, the village of Maric board of trustees suggests that the village. Managers office include the trustee liaison and the FMAC chairman while communicating with the agencies of the ACE project. And that the village manager's office be responsible working with the ACE on all construction implementation activities. But that, that sounds pretty good, no?
Nora, you got a couple of words you want to change?
Um, well, I I like, I thought collaborate and coordinate isn't in there.
Collaborate and coordinate, yeah. So, so.
I had just, look at mine, but I mean, Augie has mine slightly.
Yeah, co- collaborating coordinate is better than communicate because it's more, right, it's more.
Village of Maric board of trustees request that the FMAC trustee liaison and FMAC chair along with the village manager's office. Collaborate and coordinate with the sponsors of the ACE project to move the project forward. And that the village manager's office be responsible for working with ACE on all construction implementation activities. Um, and and that seems fine, except I like, I like it if we put village manager's office first, since they're the.
So take collaborating coordinate and replace my communication. And I think, I think the the, I think, I think you might have it.
The village managers.
So, so Augie, keep mine back up if you can. And do collaborating coordinate. Yeah, just, just copy that. Yeah.
I totally like it the way it is. Let's just leave it that way for a minute.
Yeah, so, so then FMAC board collaborate and coordinate, because it's more specific this way. Because there's a lot of agencies with the ACE project.
You're asking to be included.
Yeah. Yeah, collaborate and coordinate.
What do you want that, Jerry?
Uh, put that where it says communicate while communicate.
I.
Will, it should be will communicate, change will communicate to collaborate and coordinate. And I think you got it. I think it works right there. Hold on, I gotta change my screen.
You want to change instead of include along with, I don't have a problem with it, but Jerry, with all due respect.
Yes.
You have a problem working with me and I understand that. Let me finish, please, Jerry. Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't mean that.
You know, you've, you've put it in writing, you've sent it many times.
Yeah.
Uh, in in emails to me. It's not gonna change. I understand it and that's, that's your, that's your situation that you have to deal with.
No, it is gonna change. It's gonna change in December. What do you mean? This is to try to include.
I'm talking about, sure, it's in December. We have between now and December.
Okay.
So, you know.
Don't you're talking about the future.
See, so then you, so you don't want to do this now? Or what? I don't understand.
Want to do it later?
No, I, excuse me. The village of Maric order trustee suggested to village manager. Along with, change include to along with. Can you do that?
I'm trying.
Augie, can you do that? You, you have control of that?
Doing it, give me, uh, give me a second, Dan.
Take, take the orders out and say along with.
Yes, all what you do is you reply to this, then copy the motion, and then you can change the motion in a draft email. So just reply to this, reply all. And you'll be able to do it.
I mean, reply all right now. That's why I'm able to edit it. Okay.
So, how about we do this?
One second. Me copy this, open up word, and we keep the original and then the revised. One second, I'll do that.
Awesome.
One second. Do you have something that's gonna work?
You started so well.
But we're gonna, but we're gonna finish this. We're gonna finish this.
Well, Lou, the other concern is if the, if the, if the 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 new FMC trustee liaison. Doesn't want to be involved in the FMC project, but this.
And they shouldn't be the liaison.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, this, listen, a lot of things could change.
But they may not have expertise. They may not have interest. That's the thing.
Jerry, we'll, we'll handle it. Don't worry about it.
Hey, so let me share my screen again.
I think I did it. I think I.
Beautiful. This is the original on top and the revised is on the bottom. Dan, please continue.
Board of trustees requested the village manager's office. I can't read that.
Oh, along with.
Okay, along with.
So we have to get rid of include, along with the trustee liaison and the FMAC chairman. Will collaborate and coordinate. Communicating with the agencies of the ACE project and that the manager's office.
Not, not the. It's the stakeholders, not the.
With the sponsors, not agencies, sponsors. Change, yeah.
So, agencies is sponsors.
Well, no, it's not. It's sponsors.
Sponsors. So we turn agencies into sponsors?
Yeah.
I I don't have a problem with that. I can support.
Okay. Alright.
Village man, the village of Maric board of trustees suggests the village manager's office. Comma, along with, along with trustee lia, so get rid of. Include. Put a comma after with, get rid of include.
Yep, good.
And get rid of, um, I think you can get rid of.
Communicate.
The FMAC trustee liaison, put FMAC before trustee, I think.
Let me get rid of our. Right before, after the and before trustee.
We just want to make sure it's FMAC trustee liaison, not arts council.
Yeah.
Trustee liaison.
Will collaborate.
And coordinate communication with the agency.
Can you shrink that again?
I don't know how I enlarged it.
And at the bottom.
You did a best, Dan, thank you.
Yeah.
Coordinate, um, will collaborate and coordinate, um, communications. Or just, I I think I don't even need communicating. We'll collaborate and coordinate with the sponsors.
Yeah, yeah, w- with the sponsors, so the, yeah, that's right.
With with the sponsor, so change.
Get rid of.
Communication?
Yeah.
Agencies to sponsors.
We're good.
Responsible after agencies?
Instead of agencies, put sponsors.
Yeah. Perfect. Great, okay, okay.
Okay, so, uh.
I shall move.
We all agree to um to, to what?
This is a resolution.
It's on, it's, it's, is it on kind of work session?
It's on for today.
Yes. Let's take it a step at a time. Right now, you know.
We agree with, I mean.
Oh.
We, we've settled on a resolution.
You just agreed to move it to the next regular meeting, that's all.
Well, no, we haven't, I'd like to move it to this meeting. It's taken so long to get here. I'd like to keep moving forward. We're on a roll.
Yeah, but you know what? Um, I hear, I hear Tom saying that we don't do that.
Yes.
Agenda tonight that are going on, you know, that have not been in work session before that are going on, so we don't follow it.
It's gonna hurt August 8th. It's not gonna hurt.
Uh, nothing's gonna happen between now and then.
Yeah.
Actually, time, time is moving, not in our favor.
Right.
To move forward.
But we're talking about the other um flood mitigation stuff tonight too. So I think let's just do it all at once, literally, and we don't have to deal with this.
I agree.
But we did the hard part right now. Yeah. You know, we did the hard part right now. Let's just.
If you want to move it to tonight. On you guys.
Okay.
Remind you next time I want to move.
Okay, it gives the chair, it gives the chair of the FMAC uh an opportunity to come uh and support the the resolution on August 8th. That's also a good idea.
I think he's coming tonight.
May not be here tonight, but that's not the problem. Just, we'll just keep on moving.
That's too bad.
Alright, um, uh, so is there a motion or no? It ain't going on tonight unless you.
I move that we accept the resolution as adopted. Do we need to read it aloud again or I think we're okay? As a start.
As written.
As modified.
Okay, you moving? Anybody seconds?
A second.
Oh, no, no, I'm just, but. But that we, so that we.
Regular session tonight.
Yeah.
In 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 the, in exception to our normal procedures.
Yeah.
Alright, so that's the motion?
Yep.
Yeah, that we, but I seconded that we move it to uh on to for the regular meeting.
Augie call the role?
Trustees young?
No.
Trustee Natchez?
Yeah.
Trustee Lucas?
Yes.
Trustee to four?
Yeah. Good work, everybody.
Nice. Yeah.
Took an effort, but we got there. Collaboration.
Okay, alright, so now, um, let's take a ten minute break.
No.
Yeah.
Let's keep, let's keep on moving.
We'll be back in ten minutes.
Whenever the chair, yes.
Why?
Yeah, the chair wants ten minutes or five, whatever, sure.
Okay.
Let's make it five minutes. Let's just keep on moving.
Ten minutes, let's go, come on.
Yeah, whatever the tier ones, yes, it's fine.
All right.
What?
So coming back in on H, we gotta get back on the.
Meeting is live.
All right, we're back again after taking a brief break, thank you for your patience, uh, again, this is a board of trustees' work session. We're, uh, on, uh, old business H, which is provisions for free parking, uh, permits for the American Legion post ninety, community counseling center, the Emmeline Theater, LMC Media, and the Monmouth Public Library, um, this is, um, I believe across the street at the, uh, at, at the, what do they, what do they call it?
Parking is just, um, uh, GP.
My wife calls it the aircraft carrier, but it's, uh, but, yeah, so it is, uh, the, um, we're gonna be giving, uh, these folks, uh, parking permits for free parking, and it comes to the tune of, what, about thirty thousand dollars worth?
How many permits are we talking about, first of all, let's start there. Gary?
We have it in the backup, I think.
So it's all the employees of the library, it would be, um, all of the members of the, uh, of, of the, what, what is it next door, American Legion?
Seven for the Legion, five for LMC, sixteen for the Emmeline, and twenty-eight for the American Public Library.
Right.
We, we do have various, you know, relationships with all of these agencies, organizations, and I didn't know that, at one point, the library was the department of the village, um, and, yeah. That was, we would have.
So, so to, to break it apart, if I could, for, for a second, the intent is to discuss this so that when we come to, um, renting of the space or utilizing their facility, that we potentially, um, create and identify some agreements, uh, that would help us, um, secure those facilities, in the similar manner that we provide the thirty-five thousand dollars worth of, uh, worth of parking permits, for instance, uh, from time to time, we need certain space, uh, we ask for certain, um, uh, assistance in certain things, and we just want to make sure that, um, there's some kind of a pre-discussed agreement that, um, if we are providing, uh, free parking passes, that we would also, you know, um, have some kind of a discussion for the use of, uh, certain individuals, uh, uh, talents, facilities, those kinds of things.
All right.
It's kind of the reason why it's on here.
Okay, all right, so it's, uh, you know.
Just help each other out, um, because it should be known that the parking permits for non-village entities can add up quickly and a lot of money.
Well, you, Bob?
I was just gonna say, as Jerry and Dan have both pointed out, you can't just give away parking permits for free.
Right.
It's actually part of a contractual relationship. Is getting something for the kid.
I see, okay, so then, uh, and these things will be, uh, delineated?
Yeah.
Wait, wait, wait a minute. First of all, is this something they initiated or we initiated?
I'm sorry, I, I wouldn't know, Dan, it probably goes, it goes, it definitely goes back before I joined the village, so I wouldn't be able to answer that. I don't know how it was initiated, I know it exists annually.
It's happening now.
Yeah, it happens, it happens, because it's been in place for a long time.
Yeah, I understand, I mean, the, the library has been independent since.
I understand.
LMC has been in existence for, yeah, seventies.
So.
The Emmeline is probably.
How, how many part, we're talking about roughly, uh, almost fifty permits, how many spaces do we have in Hunter's tier?
Somewhere around, uh, two hundred, give or take, but, you know, with, with a lot of these permits, uh, you're, you're, you're not, you're typically not gonna see everyone there at the same time.
I understand that, but, we, worst case scenario, okay, let's say we have two hundred, okay, you know, that's twenty-five percent that you're taking off, did, did, and how many, how many permits do we have in Village Hall that we, uh, give out?
For employees.
Do we, do we do that?
Yeah.
So how much do we have?
I, I can answer that, we give out permits for the Regatta Parking down below, um, probably, it's probably a, a dozen, um, thirteen.
Okay, what about for one sixty-nine?
Oh, one sixty-nine, we have, uh, building department staff and, um, court staff, police, you know, they don't, they can park, they park on Johnson without really much, uh, of a concern for us.
I understand that, but do we, do, do, we, we don't give out parking passes for hunters, what I'm hearing, for staff, is that correct?
Uh, we, we utilize Hunter Parking for our pool cars, um, and we, uh, ask staff to park on the Mount Pleasance parking lot next to the courtroom where you guys are.
Okay, but my question is, with, or, is it, is the statement correct that we do not give out parking passes to employees for Hunter tier?
And we don't give out GP parking passes to employees, correct?
So, so what we're doing is reducing Hunter by twenty-five percent? Potentially.
Oh, I, I, I don't think that's accurate, I.
I just took the numbers that's in the backup.
When I mentioned is you have a lot of part-time employees at the library, they are not working at the same time, so we have a lot more flexibility. And, and the same thing with the, or the Legion, um, it would be where that you have all in use at the same time, so the Emmeline and, uh, Caesar, it's a, uh, it, uh, uh, they're not, it's not fair to say that we would be giving away a quarter of the parking at any one time to, I don't give it to the parking tier. I don't think the, uh, the actual use would be better.
But I, I think the ask isn't whether or not we should be giving these away, it's just that we have been doing it without an agreement, we need to formalize it in an agreement, and this is already happening, it's not too much parking, it's not overwhelming or, I mean, if we have to really repair the Hunter Lot, that's gonna inconvenience everybody in the village, but it, this isn't about whether or not we should be letting these parking spaces be used, it's what we want to ask in return, because we have to formalize the agreement.
We have to have multiple, we have to have an agreement with each entity so that we're, you know, on, on, on solid footing, or.
Right.
Yeah.
What, what are you asking for tonight?
Well, we, you know, we, uh, wanna be sure that this is, if we can move forward with, to use the property parking and negotiating agreements.
I think what you have to do is bring back agreements, I don't have a problem if you have, but there's no agreement, this is.
So that's, sort of, make sure that there was no issue with, uh.
Okay, so you're asking for.
I wonder what kind of agreement we would have with the American Legion, but, um.
You know, we, we had agreements with, uh, uh, the Emmeline right now.
Yeah.
Uh, we, right, there was, I think, sixty thousand dollars a year, um, we have an agreement with.
We, we've used the American Legion Hall for building, especially when this, but when this is being redone.
Then it, then it makes sense.
Okay, so, essentially, I don't have a problem, but I'd like you to bring back the agreements.
Absolutely, you have to get them.
Yeah.
Okay, good, so we can expect the agreements, and, and we're, we all agree in principle to this? Okay, great, all right, um, I, discussion of watershed characters, characterization and fieldwork sites. This, this was, um, what is this?
What?
The fieldwork was already done, right?
Yeah, that was, uh, it said that we're gonna do the fieldwork in June.
So they're just look, I mean, my sense is they're looking for ways where they can figure out how, that there are parcels that are big enough within the village and the town, in the village, a large Montellum as well, to find sites that they might be able to use for water retention.
What do they need from us?
They wanted to know if, if we had any more suggestions of more sites, but they sent the memo May twenty-sixth, and they were doing the fieldwork two weeks later.
As you said, moved.
That's my, I mean, is it moved, I mean, not that I think this is a bad idea, but if they've already done the fieldwork.
Well, I think they need to coordinate with the county that is doing a watershed management study.
So this, this looks like it, the ship already sailed, I think, right? Am I correct?
Yeah.
All right, uh, let's move on to Jay then, uh, Hurricane I- Isaiah and Ida After Action Capital Purchase Recommendations, and Jerry, this looked familiar to me. I mean, I, I, the pictures, the, the stuff, didn't we just do this?
Some of it, we looked at some.
This, we, we had this on the work sessions for eleven months. Actually got to extend it, having that, uh, for, but it's a, uh, when we did receive some additional, uh, requests from the proper manager's office and the police department.
Correct, these are additional requests.
And this is, uh, and for the, your people who are listening, this is equipment, this is, um, flood mitigation equipment, um, uh, trailers, uh, boats.
Yeah.
Waiters, um.
And, and the way we approach, um, Lou, the way we approach is that every department would request and advise, uh, our office, my office with Dan, um, the equipment that they need, so that they're prepared, uh, for, um, what the area of responsibility would be.
This is a responsible, probably, question.
So this, this.
Well, it's grown from a hundred thirty-seven thousand to almost, uh, seven hundred and some odd thousand, correct?
Uh, this one is six hundred and thirty-two thousand, only because there's a crane, which we do not have an operating crane at the time, at this time, uh, so we need a, we need a crane for removing items.
How much is the crane?
Four hundred, um, and that is probably on the high side, because in this case, the Grove Crane, we would, uh, be able to negotiate a better price, since we've been renting this crane for, I think, ten months or nine months, uh, so we would be able to take that number off the.
The crane is not strictly an emergency piece of equipment, because we need a crane, and we've been renting a crane.
Yes, and we gave the crane back, because we could not rent the crane anymore, because we had no use for it to remove, uh, you know, large lumber and pallets and things like that from the, from the river, because that's cleaned up, so.
But is it the same, is it the same crane the harbor master would be using, or not?
It's the same crane, it's, the harbor master's the only one who has the, the ability and the, and the license to operate it.
So basically, it's, it's not really an emergency piece of equipment, this crane.
If we don't have a crane, we'd have to rent a crane, and then there's, uh, issues with getting the crane in timely fashion, but that's correct.
Okay.
There is a contingency there, because.
Everything, everything.
Going up in supply, every, supplies chain issues.
Uh, and I, I see things like, uh, emergency lighting, um, you know, larger, uh, uh, mobile generators, cluttering soil for harbor master boat, um, uh, some of this, this equipment will be kept where? It seems almost like fire department stuff, but.
Dan or Jerry, do you have an answer?
Jerry? Where's Jerry?
Jerry, too. Dan?
Yeah, I, I think we would, uh, try, try, space where we can, we have the, uh, the lot, saltwater lot, uh, some of this other stuff can be, uh, stored other locations.
All I know is the village is hurting for space, you keep stuff hidden, you know, I don't know where you could, you know, this is not, the bulk of this is not a, um, insignificant storage issue.
A lot of the waiters and stuff are probably storing itself.
The wait, the waiters are not, not as significant.
Um, I'm looking here, this, this, oh, this is a fire police boat, but these are, these, uh,
I.
pontoon boat.
So if I can, if I can explain, I'm sorry, I had to go, I had to go, I have some people in here that, uh, I had to deal with, but, um, these are items that come directly from the department heads, um, to help us, uh, deal with an emergency like, uh, like another item, and, um, these are, these are what, the, the reason for the response trailer is that much of this equipment would be housed in the response trailer, the response trailer is required because, first of all, if there's coastal flooding, we can move the response trailer to higher ground at any time, within, you know, a few minutes, but, um, it's also needed where we, it's also where we need it, is, is where we need to go. There's equipment for the harbor master boat, to make sure that, uh, we have certain things, uh, uh, available to them, uh, the rescue boats, um, that's obviously a no-brainer, right, the trailer for the rescue boats, that's another no-brainer, uh, because we really need to move this equipment out, if we have coastal flooding, we move the equipment out. If we have coastal flooding, we move the equipment out like we do several times a year, but.
But where do you?
We need to be able to move it where we need to move it.
Where is the trailer gonna be kept?
Down at the harbor, down at the harbor.
Great.
Okay.
All right.
So the trailer will basically be a, a mobile unit and a storage unit.
Correct, all right, that's right. And a lot of this stuff goes in there, a lot of this stuff goes in. Obviously, you know, everything other than the rescue boats, which has its own trailer. Uh, but all of the items, portable stop signs, uh, of course, not the crane, but almost everything else goes into this uh, goes into this trailer.
All right, um, what do we need to do now? We're just referring this to the general, to the uh, the next meeting or?
Yeah, you can do it for the August eighth meeting, just put it on the August eighth meeting um and move it forward.
And the money for this comes from where, uh, Jerry, and, and just, I should probably know this, but like.
With your funding, we would, we would do. We would do a bond issuance at the, at the end of the year. Um, as I've communicated to the board, uh, you know, we're, we're, we're doing really well on our response. Uh, uh, from Ida, uh, in, in what we've generated, what we've been able to, to collect from our costs. Um, and so there will be a significant influx into our um.
Yeah.
Into our, our cap, um, into our fund balance, um, as we finalize those uh, those projects.
Like I said, I think, I think this is probably job one, uh, which is, uh, you know, climate resilience and disaster preparedness because we are facing some difficult times, but um, it's what it is.
And, and the, the great thing about this is that it's, it's fresh in everyone's mind. It's exactly what we didn't have at the time when we needed to deal with, you know, that, that devastating flood event. Um, yes, we had the crane, uh, we did have the crane because we were renting the crane anyway. Uh, because our crane is inoperative, but uh, we do not have a crane right now. And so if we needed a crane to do a rescue, we'd have to wait to get one instead of actually doing the rescue.
Uh, Jerry, I remember a while back that you said the new uh assistant harbor master was gonna be able to work the crane and stuff also, or?
So, so the, the harbor master and the assistant harbor master has to have all the designations, has to have all the designations. The assistant harbor master, in my opinion, has to have the same designations or work towards the same designations as the harbor master. Because then at that point, they're not really called an assistant, they're just someone else who works at the harbor master's office.
So where are we with that?
Oh, that, that's not until March is when we, uh, I think we proved the, the, the hiring of that individual in March, I think. Because of budget, the budget uh, conditions.
So, I mean, I, I'm, you know, I think this is something that we should be doing, but the other concern I have is that we haven't adopted our capital budget yet. And I think we need to get back on track with adopting capital budget and um, you know, because whatever seven hundred thousand dollars we spend on this, seven hundred thousand dollars, we don't have to spend on something else.
Yeah.
And so we just need to be mindful that, you know, when we're spending money, there may be things down the road that we can't do. And so I think we should be sort of looking at a longer-term spending plan.
Jerry, I'm hearing that you, you think we're gonna get some of this money back?
Not, well.
Not this.
This, but we will do extremely well on the Ida response.
Mm-hmm.
And you know, circulated emails about that.
Okay, right.
So, but, but, but let me tell you what, what, except for the response trailer and the waiters, many of these items are already in the capital budget, they're already in the capital budget plan.
But, but, but we can't afford to execute our entire capital budget, you know, we just, you know, we're not, so we, so we, so even though we have a capital budget, we don't really have a plan for how we're gonna implement it.
Yeah.
And we can't do it all in one year or two years or even five years. So I just want to be mindful that when we make a big commitment like this, it may prevent us from making another commitment down the road.
That's on us, we gotta get moving.
It may, it may, but, but if we're going to, if we're gonna be involved in another rescue and recovery like Ida.
No, no.
This should be first and foremost.
Uh, yeah, I'm not saying that, 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 I'm not saying that, I'm just saying we need to keep thinking, keep our eye on, but the overall.
We're good with this, now let's move on to Kay, uh, which is uh tweaking.
Let me say a word here.
Sure.
See, Jerry, uh, I, I think we can, we, we just need to kind of make a decision as to how to move forward. Uh, but, but make, make that and, and parse things out because some things here have, we've been waiting for years, like the little rescue boat. I've been seeing that on the, on the emergency uh, the list, uh, you remember, Dan Sarnov, remember, I was, my first uh committee was the flood mitigation. And we were just working on very basic things that, well, it was five, six years ago. So I think there's some low hanging fruit here that we must just now.
Yeah.
We have, we have a good budget, we have a good capital plan, we have everything in order to show something is low hanging fruit and urgent. I mean, it, it's just incredible to see things hanging and hanging, so all those are more complicated and let's just find a way. But if they're important and, 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 uh, meaning, meaning are costly and putting them away and storing them and maintenance. Yes, let's just find a plan to get it over. But overall, I think the idea of the package and getting this done now, uh, I, I, I'm in favor of finding a way. So thank you for putting up that list and I look forward to engaging, getting this done.
Thank you, Victor.
Thanks.
All right, uh, Kay now, uh, tweaking the ACE project. Uh, uh, suggestions, kind of goes with the other thing we were doing before. Um, uh, Dan, uh, Trusty Nash has had, had a resolution that he proposed that um, that uh. He edited it and, and, and we looked around and, and uh, I was, has been asked to communicate from the uh Committee for the Environment that they would like us to, um, they would like us to uh send along the Grassy Channel proposal that uh, that um Chairman Gelber put together. Uh, and, and uh, they were not, uh, they were not desirous of including anything else. Um, but it was a unanimous vote, so that was, that's from the Committee for the Environment.
Just for the record, that's covered in the resolution.
Right.
That's covered in the resolution.
What resolution was what?
The proposed resolution that is front of you that we're talking about.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I'm saying, but, but the, the Committee for the Environment saw that. And, and, and they said, uh, we, we would like to encourage the, the Grassy Channel, but not the other two things.
And it's, and it's in the resolution.
What's in the resolution?
The Grassy Channel.
Number two, item number two on the view of resolve. Why?
Yeah, okay, but, but, but they, they specifically did not want to include anything else.
I understand.
Okay, that's, that's all, I'm just, just relaying the message, I didn't bring it up, I just watched them vote on it and they asked.
The, the edit, the major edit was change um to waiverly because it was the wrong reference in the previous draft, and that was it, sent out this afternoon.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, so um, what do we think about this? Okay, why don't you, why don't you start? You're a, you're, you're coming the longest. Um, what do you think about the, about these suggested tweaks?
Okay, you're, you ask me, Lou, I get, I guess. Were, were you asking me or somebody else?
I'm asking you, I'm asking you.
Okay. I think there, there are several elements here. I think the open channel, the, the daylighting is, is, is clear that that's a suggestion that fits what we've been hearing from the Army Corps, uh, probably from the beginning, but more, more so lately, that those are the kind of adjustments that they can make. So that it's, it's probably this is the time that they hear from us, not imposing on them, but asking them to, to consider that and to report back to us. I think that will be number one. Number two, uh, on, on the other more substance structures, the same, uh, asking them, urging them to, to consider the issue. And third, I do like the issue of, 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 of a meeting later in the fall, hopefully in September, for example, where, where um, if they are up to it, uh, open to it, uh, join the board because the board can only communicate join uh, uh, as, as, as a group and maybe a work um, exchange where, where actually even the public can view, the manager can take his role. And between now and September, that, so that, that is also in the resolution I like. So the three elements are fine, I think there could be some adjustments so that the language is seen as we are asking them to consider this, not just making the case that this must be in there. Uh, but other than that, there's a lot of, of, of background that is relevant. And I think it, it, it combines um the effort of everybody. So I think by, by sending the, the clear communications, I uh, and signal that those are things that we're kind of top, topping the list and that we want to hear about them and, and opening this, this dialogue and, and this communication, I think will be, will be useful. So maybe a couple of changes and finish it off, maybe as an example of what we did just previously.
I think it's fine, so what were your change, what, what, what changes would you propose? There's a lot of typing, not too many.
But, but. I'd be interested in what you want to change because it, it, it's very clear that we're not asking them to do anything but consider. And if they want to do it, they'll do it, and if they don't, they won't. Uh, the tweaks are, you know, suggested as open-ended, it is not limited to it. It just simply puts forth issues that have already been identified by FEMA and the Corps in their reports uh, of issues to uh consider. Uh, it's uh, in other reports that were uh done um, for the village. Um, uh, these have been on lists that have been communicated to the Corps for years. So.
Okay.
You know, so it, but, but it's very specific and I think it's very important for those who are listening. Uh, it says, um, let me just read part of the uh, be resolved if, um, be resolved that the Village of Amerenek Border Trustees request the Army Corps of Engineers, without delaying or jeopardizing the existing funding of the plan, to look at potentially significant improvements of the plan to reduce flooding, particularly in episodic storms through tweaking of the plan. Uh, but not limited to, and then it lists of, you know, four things. The, the issue is the Corps cannot suggest things under their regulations. If you want some of them to look at something or either generally or specifically, you need to ask them. Uh, and that's what we're doing. It does not obligate them to, to say yes, no. It means that they will either just say, that makes sense, we'll take a look at it, that doesn't make sense, we're not gonna look at it. Um, and that's part of the reason to have the meeting, which was, you know, uh, of the stakeholders to try and um, you know, uh, flush these things out, no pun intended. But the whole concept is, you know, that we are gonna get floodwaters and to get the floodwaters out. That's, that's the, that's the bottom line. And that's basically what this is asking. Uh, and um, it does not obligate the Corps or the village or anybody else to do anything. It's just a thing, here's things that we've identified, we'd like you to look at them, we may have some others to, that may be identified, we'd like you to look at them. If you can do something, fine, if you can't, fine, that's up to you. You know, but it's very clear that we do not want to delay the plan. We don't want to do anything that kills the plan. It's very specific.
All right.
So.
I can, oh, go ahead.
So I'm sorry, did I share the screen properly?
Yeah.
You did, yeah.
Then, then, then I'm sorry, I think Lou wanted to say something, but since I kind of started this, if, if, if I may, then.
Go ahead.
And in line with what Trusty Nash has just said, uh, in the now be resolved, uh, hereafter storms, uh, then instead of say thought through, which is kind of si- signals we want that, consider tweaking the plan.
But let's lose.
Consider tweaking the plan, including, but not limited to, then then you can, then you can include this so that it's clearly, they are the technical people, we are, we conceptually think this could have significant uh improvement, but they are the ones who would need to adjust both the technical, the, the cost benefit, et cetera, uh, so I, I think maybe that could do it.
So you're, you're just suggesting the only word you want to change is after episodic storms, you want to change through to consider?
Consider tweaking the plan and then eliminate the, the second thorough, including, to mean including, but not limited to.
Uh, no, I'll, I'll, I'll have to object here because I think we need to lose the whole preamble. Uh, it, 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 it comes off as preachy and you're telling, not telling them anything they don't already know. So it's, it, it, it sounds like, um, it sounds like we're talking down to them. I think we should, we, we have to talk to them like they're uh grownups who already know the deal. And um, to tell them what they've already, what they already know, that, you know, you already know that these bridges are, are problems. And, and then be like, why are you telling us?
Because I think the.
Well, let me finish, please. Uh, so what, what I, what I think is, we just, uh, we just say that we would like to um, uh, request uh, without any delay, uh, that the potential um, uh, that, that you consider possible adjustments uh, uh, of the existing plan, all right? And that would include the, the detailed Grassy Channel. And then, and then, and then, and then, and perhaps uh, examination of some of the other, uh, other uh, cross river bridges that you are all already aware of. I don't think we should be, be um, trying to tell them that, you know, what, what they already know. It's, it, it just sounds a, and without backup information.
I.
I mean, the, the, the Tony's material is, is, is something you can give to them, and that makes sense to me, but just mentioning two bridges.
I, I think that understanding how the Army Corps works and understanding that there have been changes on the ground since some of the studies were done, this is the appropriate way of asking them to, you know.
But what changes? It's not, we don't, we don't.
We had, I mean, so one of the, one of the issues um about, one of the reasons we were funded, this project was funded was because the devastation was so much more significant in Ida than it had been in the past. And so our cost benefit, I mean, it's terrible to say, but the losses that we, that, that the village residents and the village endured made this project cross more cost-effective for the Army Corps and it made it fit within their funding parameters.
All right.
Well, okay, you're, and so, uh, you know, I think that the Army Corps, you know, they're committed to this project. I mean, they, people, you know, they've worked, the people who've worked on this, people who are no longer working on it for the Army Corps, but are people who are working on it now, you know, were upset that the project didn't go forward and now they have an opportunity to do the project and to make it better. But I think they, what they need is for us to be committed to making it better as well. And I think we're simply asking them in a thorough and robust way to consider more options, which was clear at that meeting is something that they're willing to do, eager to do, and they're basing it on revised hydraulic studies.
All right.
So I, I'm happy with this, with this, and I don't see the need to.
I, I think this is us telling them what they're doing. And um, and when we haven't done what we've, uh, uh, we haven't done much of anything. So um, uh, I, I think we can ask them to look at the, the parts that are clearly in their plan. But uh, but the, the, those bridges, if they're not in the plan, there are problems out there. And, and I, and I think we have to be really careful with this.
If the Army Corps doesn't think that they can improve the project and if they decide that there are certain aspects that are maybe pointed out, maybe recommended, that they're not gonna look at, they're not gonna look at it. I think that we should, I, I think with Victor's modification, I, I think we should go forward with this.
I, I think this, this, I think this uh, this resolution is condescending, it's gonna piss them off. So um, uh.
Can I suggest a way forward? I mean, typically, the hardest part is to get consensus on the resolve. And if, and it seems we have it here, so if that's the case, then maybe let's remove some language that, from the whereas clauses, that, that is not, you know, that is just um background or may signal something and we, because we already have the main goal here, which is to communicate with them. And it's really, I think it's important now, it's already, you know, it, it is close to fall, we already have the meeting with them. I think probably the right time for this to go to them. Uh, but then, then let's just remove some whereas that may, may cause some concern. And having this as a consensus from the board, I think will be very important, very, very meaningful.
If I can.
For example, on the bridges, for example, if, for example, if you can point out, Lou, for maybe this whereas on the bridges.
I think the whereas has got to come out completely, as it says, you know, the Village of Amerenek uh, is asking the Army Corps of Engineer to uh, please examine uh, the, the, the following presentation on, on the uh, AKA Grassy Channel uh, as a, as a possible adjustment to. as a, as a possible adjustment to the, to the, to the proposed culvert we were told about. And, and that's as far as I would go. And if you want to send them additional, additional requests about specific things to do with specific bridges, that would be fine. But I'm not, I'm not interested in giving them a list of stuff that's not in the project. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not interested, not interested at all.
I understand then you're entitled to your view. The reason for the whereas is in Victor, you may not be aware of it, but in my 30 years of working with the Corps, they want specifics in terms of why, even though they have the information, they would like it in whatever resolution that is done. It is very helpful to them for it, for being able to move forward. They are not allowed to suggest things. They are allowed to, they are allowed to react to requests. They doesn't mean they will accept the request. It doesn't mean that they won't accept it. It just simply means that it's in front of them and there are reasons that they may wish to consider. And that becomes very important from their vantage point. It is how they operate. I would be very concerned about taking the whereas is out. You know, this is all, yes, the information is all historic. And that's one of the reasons they wanted to help understand what the differences were between when the Corps, when the plan was originally conceived and what it is today and what Ida did. That is what they're trying to have documented in one, one place for when you're asking them to consider things. That is very specific. That is what I've been told when
I mean, you can write them a letter. I mean, if you want, that's, but I don't think it's this board's job to preach, to preach to the Corps of Engineers when they've arrived with a project that's approved and outline for us.
But they've made it clear that they're redoing a lot of the hydraulic studies and that they want, they, you know, they took new high water marks. They, they made it clear that they have some ability to modify the project.
Yes.
They need us to ask them to do it. That's how it works.
And Tony Gilbert's proposal is Okay, that's it, but the other stuff is just named, it's just naming bridges.
And that gives them the ability to decide whether they're going to do a deeper dive into it. And I think we would be irresponsible to not point out what we think are potential potential ways the project could be made better and let it leave it up to the Army Corps to make those evaluations. But they, they don't make the recommendations themselves. They need the recommendations from us. And I think we would, we should do the best that we can to provide them with the information and the requests to make this project as, as, as good as it can be. Because we know it's just going, it's not going to solve our flooding problem. It's going to mitigate our problem.
It's not going to solve our problem.
And we want
We haven't done our job elsewhere. But now we're, we're helping these guys do their job. The Army Corps doesn't need our help. I don't, I don't know why you don't understand that.
I don't, you know, I
If you don't ask, you don't, you have no possibility of saying, okay, let me see if I can help. And if you don't, and so you lose that opportunity. Anybody who is really interested in solving flooding for this village should welcome the approach of asking. The worst that somebody can do is say, no, thank you anyway. And what, there's no harm to it. The project is funded, it's authorized, it has been funded. The, you know, the Corps said that they have some abilities to do tweaking. That's their words, not ours. And if you would like to ask, what you should do is give us a history so that you identifies the differences. And so we can say, okay, maybe we'll look at it, maybe we won't. And if, and let's assume for the sake of discussion, they say, you know, we may be able to help you and do something, you know, tweak it to make it better. Why would we not want that?
They're not helping us, they're doing the project. All we're doing is throwing ideas at them. Now, Dan, you have the ability to come up with a presentation on hydraulic issues and design. You could come in with something like, like, like Tony Gilbert had on one of the, on the MTA Bridge. Say, what do you think of this? Want to give them that? I'll send that to the Army Corps.
That the village had already consented about this.
So I think we should send them this.
May I suggest way forward? Let me ask Lou first. I think, are you okay with, with, with the A, B, and C? When we, if we have considering tweaking the project?
Because it's leading, it's leading with something that's not in the project now.
Okay, so what, what, are you okay with what we have on the screen? Just like one whereas about the discretion to make tweets? Because we did hear that they're from their
To make tweet, we're in love with the tweak thing, but I'd say make adjustments to the, to the their plan without
Adjustments or tweaks, for example.
Now be resolved, because he's requests ACE as long as it doesn't delay or jeopardize the existing funding. About the death, not without, as long as it doesn't. And if it does, don't even, don't even look at this, throw it in the trash. To look at potentially to look at some of the following items. One, grassy, grassy channel proposal for, as a substitute for the, for the tunnel. B, possible examination of the MTA Bridge. C, possible, look at the Westchester County's Houshted Avenue Bridge immediately below the water than waterline down. Period. That's it. That's all you send them. You know, the rest of it is just noise.
I don't agree. And I think that, I just want to say that in the revised one, this is the earlier one, IV number four after tweaks, including but not limited to reallocating money to elevate six to eight homes in Harbor Heights for more effective cost benefits such as channelizing the river in Harbor Heights.
Dan, Dan Sarnoff has information about that, I think, because he did a, or he went with them, or he went with them on a survey last year. Dan, was it 20 or 21 when he did that survey?
Well, I think it was reported by Penny Jackson, who's a member of the Flood Mitigation Advisory Committee, that there are, were 20 to 22 homes.
Yeah.
Couple of years ago, I had, with Jerry mentioned, there is a separate, another program the Army Corps is involved with, where they look at home elevations. And he looked at some areas of the Harbor Heights specifically. And I don't know what the outcome of that. They were looking at the separate programs for that. I seem to recall that one of the reasons they looked at what they call non-structural options, non-structurally work that takes place outside of the river. So home elevations would be considered non-structural.
There's a pot of money, Dan? Wasn't that a different pot of money?
Pot of money that they, they had.
Yeah.
But, you know, I think what they said is that the 20 issues in Harbor Heights are not necessarily the same as the causes of flooding down by the confidence.
Right, but at the meeting in, 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 in May, they said that they were reconsidering some of the, they wanted to reconsider because they weren't sure elevating six to eight houses was enough and that there might be other options. I mean, the Army Corps is willing to make some modifications to this and it behooves us to ask. And I think if we're not going to ask, we are cutting off our nose despite our face.
But I think we need to ask with well, well imagined and articulated changes and not just take a look at the MTA Bridge. I mean,
It doesn't, it doesn't say just that. It has, that's why it has the different things obliterated.
It's also a little concerned with the town of Maranac. So because Dan is our point person, Dan Sarnoff is our point person in the construction for, for the village, for the village information sharing from the, from the Waverly Avenue Bridge. But then are they getting federal money or just state money for that bridge?
It's technically Federal Highway Administration money, but it's, it's a pass through that comes through.
So we're asking to divert money from the town of Maranac?
What this is asking is if there were any bodies used in the calculation for the Waverly Avenue Bridge, that that money be allocated since the town of Maranac is taking care of that bridge. There could be one, they are financially
So there might be a little bit more for something else.
All right, but is that, is that for them to?
They were unaware of the fact that it's a different branch of the Corps that gets, that reviews things. The left hand and the right hand are not as well coordinated as we would like to hope. So this is where it boils down to. It, all this, all this does is give them a request of saying, here's the reasons why we're asking. If you would like to do it and think it makes sense, do it. And if not, you haven't lost anything. Why nobody would want to do that is beyond me. But everybody's entitled to their opinion and I respect your opinion, Lou.
I don't like to tone this down, that's all.
Okay, I, I understand that.
I, I get what you're trying to say, yeah, I'm not, I'm not trying to be hypercritical.
When the Corps came up here and called me directly, okay? And I went down there. This is what I was told is they want a resolution from the, from the legislative body. They want to be asked, if you want anything, they want to be asked. If you want tweaks, might suggest what they are or just say tweaks or make it better if you can. Give us a reason why it is, that's why you have the preamble. Yes, it's wrong, but it's, it's giving them in one place the, the differences of what's happened and why you're at, you're saying, if there's a way of doing it, please do it. That's all.
Lou, Lou, if you had that request in writing, then you wouldn't have a concern about this, right? If you had, if they communicated to the board that we're asking for tweaks from the village. I don't remember ever reading anything about that, though.
Jerry, they are not allowed to ask or to recommend. They can, they will tell you, the only thing they can do is react to requests. And that is what, where we are.
Well, then, then I would
You said that they asked us to do this, they asked us to do this. They, did they ask only verbally?
We wanted to do, this is how to do it.
Well, I'm going to
And they were very clear, they can't suggest things. They can, they can react to requests. They can try and be of help. They would be willing to look at things and evaluate them and say, yes, it makes sense. Or no, it doesn't make sense, you know, and move on to the next. And so this, this is, this is something that seems to be reasonable and rational and meets what their guidelines are. And I can tell you in 30 years of working with them and getting things through and getting different things accomplished, that this is the approach that makes sense.
But now I'm confused whether they requested the village board to do this or they didn't request the village board to do. That's the concern now.
They said if, if this is, if you wanted, we talked about the things when they walked it, they, they recognized what the restrictions were.
I see, so they did
If you want us to look at that, you have to request us to do.
Okay, so we have, we have a proposal from, from
Well, Lou, one of their, one of their whereas is should be at the request of the Army Corps.
It can't be at the request of the Army Corps because
You just said they requested it, but you just
Jerry, you're putting words in my mouth and that really bothers me. I said, if they, if you want to do this, this is the format, period.
I think, I think this is too much. I think we've got to keep it really simple and, and, and then we could, then we can maybe pass something with, with, with the full board. Otherwise, otherwise it's going to be from a trunk, you know, for three members of the board.
That's still board action.
Yeah.
Victor keeps trying to say something.
Yeah, let me say, I, I think it's very important that they hear a consensus from the board.
Yeah.
I really learned that when we, when we first dealt with them and we were preparing to go to Washington to get this through. So let's just identify what we really want. We want, let's move on from what I think we heard it very clear at the, at the meeting that they will be, there's room for boots. And that they, they are doing that actually. They are not there yet because they need to do additional work. That was a little frustrating to hear, but that's the reality. They need to do more of the fine tuning on the inputs they have. But it's also very clear that they do need to hear from us as to what is, what is happening in the community. And here, A, B, and C do summarize those. So let's, let's try to get consensus on that and pass it as, 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 you know, that, that maybe it's that, you know, minimum, minimum level, but, but let's get out of it as a consensus. So I urge you to
Let me run this by you, okay? Whereas the Army Corps of Engineers has expressed an interest in desire, in, 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 in the communities, desired changes or tweaks to the, to the flood mitigation plan, whatever the official name of this thing is, flood mitigation plan for the, what's it called? Sheldrake and Sheldrake and Sheldrake and Maranac rivers. The, 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 the Village of, the Board of Trustees, the Village of Maranac respectfully request consideration to follow up. And that's it. Boom, 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 all right? Simple.
If you, I mean, it, I think we should, I'm with, if we're going to, if we're going to modify this, then
We're going to start over.
Well, then I think we would look at the, if we're going to modify this, which I don't if we're going to modify it to get a consensus, then we would use the last whereas.
Oh, what's the last whereas, what is that?
Whereas
Love whereas, it's okay.
Well, most resolutions have a whereas. Whereas it is believed that
Powdered wig out.
Whereas it is believed that the ACE's engineer has some discretion with the plan. We could probably use the full name of the planner to make tweaks to improve the effectiveness of the plan without delaying the plan's implementation or compromising the approved funding. Now be it resolved and have the now be it resolved down through C.
How about instead of now be it resolved, how about the respectfully request? All right.
It's a resolution.
It's resolution. I mean, I know we fall in love with, with the
It's not that fancy language, it's just like the basic boilerplate language. But I mean, the most, the more important part is not whether we respectfully request or now be it resolved, but the Village of Maranac Board of Trustees requests the Army Corps, without delaying or jeopardizing existing funding in the plan to look at potentially significantly improving the plan to reduce we need to ask them something.
Without delaying or jeopardizing the plan to consider the following possible changes, period.
It's not the following, it's tweaks, including.
Right.
You want to limit it, I'm trying to open it up.
Okay, including. Don't market me, Dan.
I would, if we were, I mean, I think we would just leave from whereas down to C with the addition that Dan added about Harbor Heights.
Yeah, but, but, but no way we should leave with the, with the, with the MTA Bridge. We should, we should leave
If that's the case, then we're not going to have consensus.
Then we're not going to have consensus.
And that's Lou, what does number four, B4 mean? Work with the village during the design phases? I thought the design phase was completed.
Design phase has just started, Jerry.
And one and, one and two are Yeah, one and two are contained in the grassy channel proposal. So it's just, and I think that's the meat of it, the, the
That may be the thing that you think is the most important, but what we're, the goal is to give, to tell the Army Corps that we are looking for them to broaden the project to the best of their abilities and interests.
You see, no, now we're not broadening the project.
That's what, Lou, that's what they, that's what they, they talked
Tweaking it is not, you want to broaden it?
Well, it's, I mean, it's, it's expanding it, it's, it's whatever. I'm not on thin ice, I'm not on thin ice. And by limiting it to one proposal that they may think is silly, I mean, they may not think it's silly, but by limiting it to one proposal, we're not We're not giving them the the.
You could send them additional re- requests.
No, it, they don't want five different requests from five different board members, they want, they want us, we can only act as a board. We can act as a group, and I think Victor's trying to come up with some sort of a solution. Because you don't like, you don't want the this this complicated one, Victor's come up with a solution. And that's not working for you either, so. You know, I think Victor understands that we need to make a request from the Army Corps, Dan needs to understand it, I need to understand, I understand.
I mean, I mean, why, why does the Army Corps of Engineers already not seeking to remove or reduce construction caused by the Metropolitan Transitors? There were rich, I mean, uh 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 why are they already not interested?
Because of the cost, okay, so what happens with these projects is there's a cost benefit ratio, and for every dollar that's spent. You have to be able to prove that you are going to reap those benefits in 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 flooding. If you don't, okay, if that, that's, that's not, you know, that's just, that's a basic. Because we had so, we, the lot, basically, you know, it's like when the lines cross and it's a good, you know. Investment or not, we had, we, the funding was, the cost benefit ratio. Wasn't significant enough before Ida. And that's part of the reason it didn't meet the L and B.
So you wanna go back and.
No, I. No, what I'm saying is, unfortunately or fortunately, I I mean, the devastation from Ida. Made this a more cost effective project, the money that they're gonna spend, we're going. We are going to be able to mitigate some some flooding because there was such devastation.
And and the money we don't have to put into it, it's money that we can apply to some of these other.
Exactly, but we aren't, but they may be able to look at some other. Options that they thought were too expensive because they weren't gonna meet the cost benefit ratio, but now those numbers have changed.
So I didn't hear that.
Okay, so, so what, I think what we need to do is just ask the Army Corps plan. To look at what they think they can do and not give them too much direction about what to do. Just give them some broad brushstrokes, but we need to make that ask, and I think. We, if 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 we can do the, if to, following up on Victor's suggestion. If we can do from whereas it is believed down to C. We get that ask, and if we can get to consensus on that, it eliminates most of what you wanted eliminated. It eliminates most of what Dan wants in there, but it makes the ask, maybe that will be enough.
This was gonna be a roadblock, alright.
Lou, we getting a dinner break?
Yeah, um well, well, since we took a ten minute break earlier, we'll make it a ten minute break, okay? Fifty, um.
Where's Victor? Do we just?
I um.
Just disappeared.
Yeah, what happened?
Probably come back, they'll probably come back. I'll be back in a second.
I I, you know, I'm sorry, I just can't, I just can't, I I just, I just think that that we're screwing around here.
Did Victor have to leave?
As I'm looking.
I I know, I know you guys still feel strongly about this, but I think, I I think you're on thin ice, and I think um. I think you're too too obsessed with this plan, which was never the entire solution anyway. And 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 the obsession with this plan is a reason nothing was done so many years because this was gonna be it. Or part of it, or whatever, and and a million other things we should be doing. Rather than screwing around with the with the professionals who are giving us an eighty eight million dollar gift. That's my, that's my opinion.
Okay.
So, I mean. Uh uh yeah, we could ask him to look at some things, but I but I I certainly, we gotta get away, we gotta let them do their job. I mean, I want the grassy channel, I'll take the friggin tunnel, whatever they, whatever they, whatever they wanna do, I mean, we just gotta get the water out of there.
So.
Uh so I don't think we could, we we can, we we certainly can't go anywhere without without Victor, uh the three of us could uh could vote on it, but that's.
It's on, it's on for the regular meeting.
Oh, it's not for regular. Alright, let's take a break then, guys, and. Oh, no, we'll take, well, can we do one more?
We can't, we can't go on to the regular meeting if it wasn't, if it wasn't agreed upon in the works.
On the agenda for the regular meeting.
Well, we're gonna have to push it.
No.
Sorry, Jerry, it was originally to be on the, and we, we could discuss here. We we're we're going on in the, on the irregular agenda, and we will be doing that.
So what do we have to do before the regular meeting? Oh.
Uh there is.
That's just something we have to, we have to change the code so you can enforce the uh the the.
Yeah, there there's a uh. Couple of years ago, the uh track commission made a recommendation to erect a no U-turn sign at Villa Avenue. I, Mamaronek Avenue. The county installed a sign for the village. Uh after they completed their recent.
Oh, but we never changed it. We have to adopt the law, okay.
Okay, so and I think that that's a, that's an easy one for us, okay?
Yeah.
Very good, so we'll we'll uh we'll we'll all agree to that, the three of us will agree to that, is that okay, Dan?
Yeah.
Okay, and we'll put that on the.
But that that doesn't affect coming out of Villa and making a left head turn.
No, it's only for the.
I just wanna make, I wanna make it very clear.
Yeah, and for Mamaronek Avenue traffic going north, they can make left at the, at the U-turn right at the uh.
No, I understand it, you you have it, you have a pull off lane at Texas, I understand that.
Yeah, alright. Um so, K, then we. Why was it on the work session agenda if it's already on the um?
It was already on the regular session agenda, so.
Where is it?
Yeah, I don't remember if it was agreed upon last meeting.
That's where we agreed on the meeting before that.
We just did all that for nothing?
Victor is back with us now.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I lost my connection, but here I'm back.
Not a problem, so the question is, are we um, where where we are is uh, Lou is not happy. Even with your suggested compromise, uh it's on for the regular meeting, do we wanna pitch forward on the regular meeting, I think that's what we need to do.
Yep.
Well, I'll give it one more chance, maybe uh, so we keep one whereas. The 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 heading of the now be resolved with the minor changes we discussed about. Uh requesting, those are modifications or tweaks, then keep A. Keep B, ru- uh ru- uh small one and and two. Maybe remove three because that is something that they are the ones really doing.
But they own the.
We're we're gonna finish, and then make four a C and make C a D.
Hmm.
Because we we can, we, you know, I I think that that, again, this is not the last chance, but we 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 just get this this rolling and and we. Get it out as a consensus, then we can, as things move forward, we may be able to to focus things a little better, so that's my last chance. Uh getting consensus here. Would that work?
You're saying.
Three and four, don't relate to the area around Congress Park. So they shouldn't be included in some sets within that.
And 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 one and two are part of the same uh policy, right?
But we haven't included any, you know, rethinking about Harbor Heights, which is, you know, had significantly more flooding in Ida previously.
So, is is, so what I understand. Let me see.
Bringing the Harbor Height, yeah, bring the Harbor Height issue, I I I think that's important, and 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 just keep. The one whereas the resolve, A, B, one and two, eliminate three, make four, uh make four. A C which allows new things that they come up with, or we identify, it's just an open. Kind of mutation and make C a D, that's kind of my final.
And so Har- would Harbor Heights be the new three? You don't have, see, Dan, some, we have a new resolution in front of us. So it's, so if if three, if we're not talking about the Waverly Avenue Bridge. Which we're gonna have to let, you know, that is a significant, that is a significant amount of money. Take, that can be used, that can be repurposed, if C. Right, I'm just saying, if you don't, if you think we don't have to put that in the resolution, where would we add Harbor Heights?
That would be C.
That would.
And and uh and C would become D.
Is the Corps allowed to reallocate funding?
Yes. That's what they said it that when they were here.
Yeah.
They, the 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 engineer has the ability to look at ways to improve, which. Means reallocating, massaging, tweaking, they use the word tweak. Okay, that doesn't mean that they will do it, it doesn't mean that they won't do it. It means all we're asking them to do is to look at it. And one of the, one of the reasons that I put the Waverly Avenue uh bridge in there. Uh money is because they can use that money in in terms of reallocation. However, they would need to do it, which they officially do not know.
But how do we, what's the process of them not doing anything on the Waverly Avenue Bridge? Do they just decide to do that because it was included in the original, in the original design?
They they they, they need to be notified so that they will then, you know, say, okay. We won't, we don't need to do that, it's been taken care of by others. We have not notified them, that's what this basically was to try to do.
Are we, are we permitted, uh I'm sorry, Dan, during the, during the meetings that you've had on the Waverly Avenue Bridge. Has uh Mr. Wasp or anyone from. Uh HVEA mentioned anything about Army Corps?
Yes, they have said that they have coordinated with the Corps about the plans. And the Corps is not, you know, and the Corps had made suggestions on things to be done, so it would be consistent with the plan.
Right, so the Waverly Avenue Bridge.
So so, so the people who are actually the technicians are in core coordination. But it's still in allegedly in the whatever budget was created. And it has not been officially told that that is not.
So they already know that there's no money that should be spent there, right?
Not officially.
Oh, not officially, but they've been told that from others, but not officially.
That is correct.
Yeah, I think what you're saying is, we're the ones who have to tell the left hand.
That that is correct. It's government and. Government in action.
And they asked for that?
They, it was suggested it would be helpful. They haven't sugge- they they haven't asked for anything, Jerry. They have made suggestions that if we wanted to do something, here's the process to do it. Okay, they have, they they are not allowed to make suggestions. They are allow, they are, they are allowed to react to requests and suggestions.
But they made a suggestion of the Board of Trustees to provide suggestions.
They had, in my discussions with them. They have said that if the board, if the village wants to do something, they need to hear from the legislative body. And uh they will then look at whatever the board, whatever the legislative body is asking for. They may agree, they may not agree, and here's it, and here is the process of going through it.
But they requested, so that's good, I mean, if you have to be on the same page, so that's good, that's.
We're on the same page, but be very careful, they cannot request the board to do something, they can. That is different.
Alright, um we're gonna take, we're gonna take a uh a ten minute break, we'll, oh, well, maybe, yeah, ten or fifteen minutes for for dinner. Um I apologize to the audience, we'll be starting a little bit later, our our regular meeting. Um we need to end the work session.
Yeah.
Okay, motion to end the work session.
Don't move.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi, wait.
He was just following.
All right. Recording?
Board of Trustees' regular meeting, uh, July twenty fifth.
Uh, we're convening at the Village Court. And the three trustees and trustee Victor De Four is joining us from a remote location. We request a motion to open the meeting.
Second.
All in favor? Please stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I.
A pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America. To the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible. We're gonna have, start with communications to the Board. Or Doc, pardon me, thank you. It's my third meeting, chairing, it's time chairing a meeting since I was a class president in nineteen sixty nine. So, uh, I'm taking points of order.
I moved to the after agenda.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, all roll.
Trustee is young.
Yes.
That is.
Yeah.
Lucas.
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Okay, great. Now, communications to the Board. Folks, you have a five minute limit when you talk. Uh, and we have uh, three public hearings tonight, so please stay on point, keep it brief, don't run over. Thank you. All right, we have anybody?
Yeah.
Oh, we do. What a shock. Uh, go Mr. Tibbet. All right, start the clock.
Good evening, everyone. I hope everybody's enjoying the summer. Had a lot of nice events here in the village of Marnik. We have a, uh, event coming up, August second. Family night out. Fireworks. We're gonna have the police, we're gonna have the fire, fire department, we're gonna have EMS. We're gonna have a DJ. We're gonna have, you know, different acts and everything. We're gonna have beautiful fireworks display. And nobody in the village knows about it. Why? There's no signage anywhere. Harbor Island, no sign. Baldwin Avenue, uh, Fennamore, no signage, village signs. Across from the post office, no signage. They did do a, uh, a post on the internet on July nineteenth. And it's absolutely gorgeous. It tells you all the information and everything like that. But how do you have an event that your rec department is probably working overtime to put together? You're coordinating all your different departments. And you're not advertising it. It is ridiculous. At least a big sign at Harbor Island that says, hey, we're gonna have a fireworks display here on August second. I mean, I don't think that the, the way people should find out there's a fireworks display is to hear big noises at about nine fifteen on the second and call up the police and go, something blowing up in the village. Um, I saw you, uh, have on the agenda. Um, like another spending and it says it's fine, it's seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars. You realize at this point in time, you have forty-three projects that has been approved by this board that are currently being either planned, worked on in the process of being done or finished and have to be paid for. You can say that you got a lot of FEMA money coming in. But as of right now, your actual physical budget is three point seven million dollars out of whack. Why? We, uh, we encumbered one point eight million, including one million dollars for FEMA. We added another million dollars uh, for, um, Ida repair. So we have two million dollars in Ida expenses that we added to the budget. We also have added about nine hundred thousand dollars to the budget. So in total, you have three point seven. Even if you turn around and got four million dollars for FEMA, you would need two million to to pay the FEMA expense and the other two minute million could be dredging in what you just passed. That's four million. You only got forty-two other projects. Then quickly, you were talking about people being on boards and everything. You want it to be very difficult to be able to get rid of board members. Because board members aren't your shirt. I want the color blue today. I want the color red today. And one of the things that keeps both sides in check in this village is the fact you may have a board that leans completely to the left, completely to the right. But it takes two or three years for our boards to turn over. Therefore, there's, there's more continuity with them. And we don't have reactionary boards, which if we had had in the past, this village would look a lot different. And I think everybody would not be happy. Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn Tivett. What neighborhood you living, Glenn? Hey Glenn.
Yes.
What neighborhood do you live in again? What do you call, is that, that's not Heathcote Hill, is it?
What's that?
What neighborhood are you, you live in? What do you call?
I, I am in the neighborhood where we use leaf blowers three hundred and sixty-five days a year.
Okay, thank you very much. I can picture it, but I can't picture exactly where it is. All right. Okay, um, anybody else for communications? Yes, go ahead, please. What tells who you are? What tells who you are?
Absolutely. Uh, my name is Caitlin Carpenter. I am seventeen years old. And I just graduated from Ameritic High School and I'm a part of Sunrise Westchester. Um, I'm just making some comments that are supposed to serve as kind of a reminder and a starting point. I believe that, um, I've emailed with trustee Lucas about this before. Um, and this is to follow up to the conversation that we talked about having that I did have with Ellen Silvers. Um, so I'm a part of Sunrise Westchester, which is a branch of the National Flood Sunrise Movement, um, which is fighting for prompt and abrupt and, uh, just transition off of fossil fuels. Um, in, just to start off, in twenty twenty, um, we helped to introduce and pass a resolution with the village of Marneck that was in opposition to the Dan Scammer Fract Gas Proposal, um, which has since been denied. Um, and then they filed for an appeal and it was denied yet again, um, in June of this year. So, um, that is in part due to what the village did, so I thank you for that. Um, and I thank you for standing up for what should be the new normal in New York State, which is again a quick and just transition away from fossil fuels and towards renewable energy. Um, the reason why I'm wearing this shirt that has a post-it note on it is because this past Friday, the climate clock, which is most famously, at least in this area, located in New Square in New York City, but there are also climate clocks across, um, the world, turned from seven years to six years. The clock signifies how long we have to reach net zero emissions before we surpass in track to meet one point five degrees of warming. Our window for action is only narrowing, yet meters everywhere seem to be doing absolutely nothing. Um, needless to say, we're probably not gonna meet one point five degrees. Um, due to the failure of our state legislature, if you didn't know, um, to pass any meaningful climate legislation in the past couple of years, New York State is only at four percent wind and solar energy despite a twenty nineteen mandate that we meet seventy percent renewables by twenty thirty. Not to mention, of course, the blockage of, uh, legislation in Congress and of course, the landmark West Virginia versus NCA decision in June on the federal level. Um, over the past week, we've seen record heat waves across Europe, Canada, and the Northeast. Uh, later on the agenda this evening, there are multiple items, um, that are in relation to the, the improved resiliency um, in the face of what has proven to be the most dangerous impact of climate crisis on this village, which is storm flooding. Um, needless to say, climate should be at the forefront of all of the village's actions now more than ever. And not just efforts to recycle or reduce food waste. Uh, we need a serious reduction of greenhouse gas emissions across sectors. And that's why I've come to comment. And again, this is a starting point. Um, my comment tonight stems from a new campaign that our Sunrise Westchester hub has taken up this year, which we call our new climate action demands. Um, as I mentioned, meeting on the board, and I've recently spoken with Ellen Silvers, who's the head of the Environmental Committee and the Climate Spark Committee's Task Force, um, about this very thing. So, carrying more suit. Um, due to the aforementioned failures of our higher up government officials to act, it is time that municipalities in specific lead the way with climate action within New York. Um, realistically, a transition off of fossil fuels does happen at a local level. Um, in building retrofits, building rechargers, um, creating new renewable energy infrastructure, all of that requires local involvement, so it meets community specific needs. Um, and so that's why what we're doing with these climate action demands, um, is demanding that municipalities across Westchester County commit to the statewide climate goals established in twenty nineteen CLCPA. These include a forty percent reduction in greenhouse gas emission by twenty thirty and an eighty-five percent reduction in greenhouse gas emissions by twenty fifty. Um, our hub has a resolution that specifies these specific demands, and then we also have compiled means, uh, put together by the state and a lot of other cool organizations that work on this, um, to help the village do that. And I'm happy again to talk more of that in detail. The town of Austin recently became the first municipality to pass this resolution, and we're currently also in conversation with the city at this scale. Our ultimate goal is to have every Westchester municipality commit to these demands and for the county government itself to also provide more support for municipalities. Um, one easy thing the village can do that I want to mention in this comment in specific, um, is pass the New York Stretch Energy Code, um, which would help to reduce, um, which would help to reduce emissions in the village buildings. It's my understanding from that conversation that I mentioned before with Ellen Silvers that the village has discussed adopting these codes and maybe theory would be in support of them. Already several similar municipalities within Westchester have passed them, including the town of Bedford, Village of Hastings-on-Hudson, and the village of Doggsbury. And what of course, of course, what would be even better is for the village to follow in the footsteps of the town of Fairfax and San Antonio in California, which as of last week for the latter, the town of San Antonio passed a ban on all new natural gas hookups in new buildings and improvements and renovations. That's similar to the ban that also just passed in New York City this past September. Again, can I have one last sentence?
Sure.
This comment was intended to function as the start of conversations relating to the resolution. And a reminder that the village does have a responsibility to be a climate leader. If the village of Marneck can't even meet our twenty thirty necessary climate goals, there is truly no hope for anybody else.
Thank you Caitlin. And thank you. On behalf of our generation, we apologize for the world we're leaving you. Yeah, the, what you're talking about is the most important thing, period, because everything else is moot if we don't fix it and we're not fixing. So thank you. Speakers usually don't get applause.
And she doesn't even have her fiddle with.
See what happens to Bernie.
Bernie Marta.
Top act to follow.
Send everyone an email. Some videos of the dam. Just to enlighten everyone what's going on. I think we need to put this on the agenda to study this dam for flood control. Um. There's a few major problems within the system. The Columbus Park, the dam and the reservoir. Um. I know you guys are speaking with the county with the reservoir. But this dam has to be looked at. Um, it's, it's well overdue. It, in my mind, it's, it's the problem of the river system. Um, and the reservoir. It's all one unit. And I know there's complications from Westchester Joint Water Works owns this, Mamaroneck owns this part of the reservoir, but not that part of the reservoir. And everyone needs to work together for the solution. And this one big unit, which is the reservoir and the dam, which is one unit, one flood control unit, that needs to be working. It doesn't work right now. I sent everyone emails of the overgrowth. And I know no one wants to cut down trees and I don't want to cut down trees, but we have to cut down trees and clear all of the overgrowth of the reservoir. So this retention system can do what it's designed to do and retain the water that's coming from Up County, which is twenty-four square miles of watershed. Um. With that being said, I understand that there's tweaks and you know, there's so many theories going around this one with opening up the bridge. And I agree with a lot of them. And I don't agree with some of the plans. With especially the one at Columbus Park, where you're gonna lower the parking lot and then put a tunnel, a tube, to straighten it out. That's fine. But you're gonna park cars in, in the parking lot. And then we're gonna get a flash flood. And a car is gonna float and go into the tunnel and clog the tunnel. And we're gonna be back to square one. And in my opinion, the Army Corps of Engineers, that ship has sailed. You know, this plan has been approved, paid for. I, look, we could try to make them tweak it, but let's not waste too much time on tweaking everything. Let them do their job. Let them do their thing. Listen, let's, it's good for, to bounce ideas off of them. But this back and forth of too many, too many people telling them what to do. I mean, I've heard you need to for, 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 for an example, the dam. I say the dam is the culprit and everyone tells me, well, we need the experts to look into this. The experts came, the Army Corps of Engineers, and they looked at this river system. And they made their evaluation of what they want to do. So they are the experts. We need to listen to the experts. And we need, and we need not to get in their way. You know, only help the process. So with that being said, I'm all for fixing anything and improvements is gonna be fine. My problem was, is with the wording from the flood mitigation, which was, which I listened to the other day. Excuse me, listen to the flood mitigation. The wording is, you're giving them an out. You're giving them an out right away. You don't want to delay, you don't want to delay the project and you don't want it to cost more money. They're gonna just turn around and say, okay, we can't do anything. The, the, the plan is done. It's, it's gonna delay. You're giving them an out right away. So I think, look, you want to do the tweaks, that's the tweaks. Don't put the dam and the reservoir on the back burner. It cannot be on the back burner. It is one of the major problems why we get flooded. You need to put the study of the dam on the agenda. One of you, five, Victor included, has to put the study of the, of the dam. We have a company GHD that's coming or ready to do some studies on dams. You need to put it in.
Thank you, thank you, Brian. I think Jerry's gonna have some news on the dam a little bit later. So, all right, anybody else for communications? Robert Stark. All right.
My name is Robert Stark. I live at seven oh four Palm Court.
Okay.
I'm a member of the traffic commission. I'm not here representing the traffic commission. But I'm here to discuss the traffic commission issue. I'm here to correct the record that was discussed at your work session regarding the membership and removal of traffic members. The traffic commission is an important commission. A commission that tries to resolve pedestrian vehicle safety issues for residents in the village. I've been on the traffic commission since December of two thousand and twenty. Last year due to COVID, there were no meetings in August, September, October. Our November twenty twenty-one meeting was canceled due to a lack of quorum. On March eighth, twenty twenty-two, we had another meeting canceled because of a lack of a quorum. On March ninth, I sent an email to our village manager requesting that he contact a member who has not attended any of our meetings since July twenty twenty-one. I didn't hear anything back from the village manager in terms of what the status of contact this person or remove the candidate or replace them. Look, have you paid attention or?
What does? Box running.
So on March ninth, I didn't hear anything. I did not hear anything from March to April at our May twenty twenty-two meeting. I asked our chairperson to follow up with our village manager to find out what was happening with removing this person and creating a replacement for our commission because we needed an extra member in order to make sure that we didn't have any canceled meetings for lack of a quorum. On May twelfth, our, our chairperson sent me an email saying that he did speak to our village manager and that the village manager told him that it was all taken care of. And Jerry, our village manager, attached an actual order, dismissal, I'm gonna read what it says. Admittedly, a letter per village code forty-eight point two, please remove blank from the traffic committee due to lack of attendance. Thank you for your cooperation. Sincerely, Jerry Barrio. This is May of twenty twenty-one.
Twenty.
Jerry also told our president that the village was in the process of publicizing the open position. You know, we can, we don't know why. To find a replacement. This is completely different from what was presented at the work session. I don't know where you got the information about the status of replacing somebody or not replacing somebody. I don't understand. And I'm here to correct the record. And so this person was removed in May. It's now July. I'd like to know what this, so according to the code, the village manager, after this person is contacted and removed, the village manager shall report any such removal to the board of trustees at its next meeting. So my question is, was this reported to the board of trustees for you to appoint a replacement? I'd like an answer. I don't have a lot of time here. I intend to forward a bunch of attachments and emails and other information in reference to this situation. Because I think it's very important for the village, for our residents, for the people who are concerned about their traffic and safety issues that we have a complete membership for our commission so that we can do our work for the benefit of our residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hi, I'm John Hofstadter. I wanted to just get something on the record. On August ninth of twenty twenty-one, I appeared at a board of trustees meeting. I spoke during the public comment period on an issue of concern of concern for me and my neighbors. And the village manager appeared to take umbrage at some of my comments. And following the meeting, in an apparent retaliatory measure, the village manager sent a directive to the TPW to release the stones that were lining my property along Maple Ave. And I called DPW that day to ask what had occurred. They told me that they had received a work order. I asked for a copy of the work order. They told me they couldn't give me a copy that it had come from the village manager. So on August twelfth, twenty twenty-one, I went to see the village manager and asked him for a copy of the email directive that he had sent to the TPW. And he explained that he had directed the stones be removed. And it was a work order. And I asked him to show me the work order and he did. He stated he received a complaint about the handful of stones lining my property from quote unquote, someone. And I asked who, just out of curiosity, and explained to him that I found it odd that an order to remedy was not issued, that I wasn't given a chance to remedy this situation. And during that conversation, I pointed out the reason for the stones that were there was, you know, that my neighbors at the corner of Prospect and Maple had over the years narrowed the way we were approaching further into the village right away in the eight or so years that they had owned the house. The five stones that I had laid out there were both a physical and a visual barrier for people. And in fact, they did in, in one case, prevent somebody who was intoxicated from driving into the side of the fence. So what I find ironic is, you know, it's a fifty-foot right away between my neighbor's house and mine and there's only sixteen feet of pavement. And in the last year, my neighbor has received a permit to put in a pool. And because that neighbor now has a pool, they have no room in their backyard or their side yard and they have further infrastructure to fill it right away. Among other things, they now have their trampoline in right away, you know, on and on. And in fact, when they dug the hole to put the pool in, they pulled out stone and they used that to line their side. Yet, there was no response from the village to address it all. And then, you know, just out of curiosity, I figured I'd just look into it. And it turns out that there is no survey. When requested, the village of Marneck Building Department could not provide a signed stamp survey in relation to a permit that was received and issued for the pool. So I don't know how that occurs. And I don't really care. I mean, I don't really care about the pool. The pool is not the issue. I just find it ironic that the village of Marneck is going after me for having five stones out. And given that the village manager drives by the house, both our houses every day, has been unable to see what has been going on. Especially given that he's taken an active role in supervising the building department. So I have a number of things, you know, I'll hand you this now and I hope that you guys all read it and share it and look into it. I'm just kind of curious how you get a permit without a survey. And why I would be selectively in, you know, action being taken against me selectively by the village manager. Like, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Hofstadter. Nice to put a face to the name. Um.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Oh, thank you. Yeah, we have, I can't read who that is.
It's Lori Friedley.
Lori Friedley.
I could have, I could have listened to her while you were walking up there, sir. Mr. Teeger, is it?
Good evening, Mr. Teeger. I want to follow up and expand on my comments I made at the last meeting about the three-year harassment campaign against Peters. It's cost taxpayers more than seventy-nine thousand dollars. The harassment continues. Five days after I spoke, I received papers from the village prosecutor to continue prosecuting six of the original violations despite the final ZBA decision resolving all zoning issues. Last time, I said the mayor had made a baseless claim that I had an illegal apartment on my third floor. I want to be clear what I meant by his baseless claim. After the ZBA's final decision, the mayor sent the ZBA members and others an email, including what he described as an affidavit. He had considered submitting on my matter. In it, he made a number of false statements, including I have firsthand knowledge of the apartment. To the best of my knowledge, the mayor has never been on my third floor. He stated, one day during this, I, one day during, I believe, the summer of two thousand and eleven, Mr. Teeger asked me if I cared to look at his upstairs apartment, which was newly vacant. My tenant from two thousand and, two thousand to two thousand and thirteen submitted an affidavit to the court stating I lived on the floor of Beach Avenue until two thousand and thirteen. The mayor stated that my third floor contained an electric range. My tenant's affidavit stated, I did not have a stove on the third floor of one thirty Beach Avenue. It also stated that early in my time living at one thirty Beach Avenue, a village employee, Len Russo, inspected the third floor space while I was present. Mr. Russo observed the door with locks and the entire premises, stating that everything was fine and code compliant. Len Russo, at the time, was the assistant building inspector. The mayor stated, I had no hand in that action being commenced. According to village attorney's invoices, the last phone call made prior to my home being invaded under a criminal search warrant was to the mayor. The mayor regularly complains about litigation costs, but doesn't seem to appreciate that in my matter and other village cases, these are self-inflicted wounds. Unfortunately, residents have to bear the costs. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Have a hand up.
Oh, yes, right.
Lori Friedley.
Lori Friedley. Can you bring her in? Hi Lori.
Hello, everybody. I hope I'm speaking.
Hello, everybody, um, I hope I'm speaking, um. So that everybody can hear me, I don't see myself, but maybe you can see me.
Uh, we we could hear you, we could hear you fine, we can't see you, but but go ahead.
Okay, um. The reasons for my questions this evening are, I live on Beechwood Drive. Which is one of the two, Theresa Lane and Beechwood Drive are two one way cul-de-sacs. That descend into Mamaronek Avenue. Um, we recently, my neighbors and myself, there are a number of my neighbors here as well, listening to me speak. Um, we were surprised to learn that the, either the village of Mamaronek or the Westchester County, um. Traffic Department, um, placed a no U-turn sign at the corner of Villa Avenue and Mamaronek Avenue. This. We had many, many years ago, perhaps thirty years ago, they had done this before. And we had brought to the attention of the village that, um, forcing us to make a U-turn at Raleigh Road. Um, puts us in very serious danger. And that, the reason for that is because people come around that curve at lightning speed. Lightning speed, I know that because I walk my baby granddaughter there all the time. And, um, there is. When we make our turn at Villa, they've already, cars have already come around the S curve and are going a little bit more slowly. Um. The place we are now going to be forced to make that turn is maybe a hundred and fifty feet, maybe two hundred and fifty feet. Where everybody runs into the sand, um, drums that they had to put up by the highway. Because they are speeding around that curb so quickly. So I have a question or two questions that have to do with that. Number one is, has anyone caught the speed of the cars coming around at the Raleigh Road turn that we will be forced to take? Number two, has anybody tracked the speed at the Villa turn, which is right in front of the waterworks? Where it is much safer? Number three, has anybody tracked the number of accidents? Either at the, um, at the turnoff to the I ninety five and or at the Raleigh Road turn? And has anybody tracked the, um. The number of accidents there have ever been at the, uh, U-turn at Villa, which is much, much safer. And number four, this is the last question, has anybody ever asked the residents who live here? About this, we were not even consulted, the sign went up without a word from anybody. Um, that's all I have to say, um, but I think it's very important. And, um, please note that if you're in the passenger seat. Of a car making that U-turn at Raleigh, you are. A dead man or woman.
Lori, thank you, thank you very much, I could, I could tell you that the, the subject of those, um, those turnarounds. Uh, at Mamaronek Avenue have been extensively discussed at the traffic commission. And there is a something on the, on Villa. Uh, today on the agenda, is it, is it on today or is it two weeks?
Yes, today.
It's on tonight's agenda.
Yeah, and, uh, and we can, uh, we can, uh, 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 address some of the problems, there's a number of conflicting safety issues there. And I understand that, that, uh, I understand the, the complexity of it, but that, that, that stretch of Mamaronek Avenue is a problem. And, uh, and, and you're right, the speed is, 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 uh, is too, too high and, uh. And the, the U-turn is so, once, one solution that some folks came up with, but we will, um, we will be discussing it in a little while.
Um, may I speak when you do discuss it, or may I add one thing?
Uh, well, you can talk now, or you can, you can, you can call us back then, um, I think that would be, uh. Is, is there a public comment at that second, at that point? Yes, yeah, you can, you can, you can certainly call back, absolutely.
Okay, I'll hang out till you get there.
All right, thank you, we know, we know it's not a simple solution, and we appreciate your patience.
Well, a traffic light would help.
Oh, yeah, okay, thank you, thank you, all right. Anybody else for public comments? All right, we have, um, uh. Three public hearings. Um, and before we begin, um, each, each of these, uh, each of these public, uh, public laws that we're discussing. Um, uh, all talk about the authority of, of the mayor and, and changing the, uh, the structure of our, our government slightly. In moving some powers from the mayor to the board of trustees, and these are proposals that would, um, are required by law. To be, uh, validated by a referendum. So therefore, we have the, uh, public hearing, and then we would vote on it afterwards, then, then the voters, uh, presumably. Of the, um, uh, of the village would get a chance to weigh in on what they think of it, and, uh, and it would happen or not. Uh, the, there was a complex, there was a procedural complication that I want to alert everyone to, and that we have two conflicting laws. Uh, the state of New York, um, that, uh, enable, that activate, uh, referendum, and I'll ask, uh, our, our. Village attorney boss Baldino to explain that. And explain that even though we go through all this tonight, there's no guarantee that any of it will happen. So, there's a number of complications, go ahead.
So there's one law that says. If you adopt this law in advance, within sixty days in advance, you have to hold all the hearing. Uh, I'm sorry, you have to hold the election, special election. It's another law that says if you don't get it to the board of elections by. On, by ninety days in advance, you can't hold it at the general election. It's conflicting, but the, uh, the board has proceeded on the assumption that. If the board passes it, calls for the resolution, calls for the, uh, special. Calls for it to be voted on general election, that that will be honored. Uh, by the board of elections.
But that, there's no guarantee that would happen if it were challenged in court.
It's possible to.
Which brings us to the rest of the story, because, um, although I am, I am, uh, uh, cool to these proposals. I, I don't think they're, they're all universally great ideas, there's some good ideas here, uh, the mayor is absolutely, uh, adamantly opposed. Uh, um, for, uh. Protecting the powers of, of, uh, subsequent mayors, so he will take this to court. Uh, he has promised to, so, uh, it may, it may not happen, um, and a, and a court may decide. That's the background, let's, um, let's, uh, uh. Let's go with the first public, uh, the, the reading, I guess we have to read the law first.
You have to open the public hearing.
Oh, okay, let's, uh, motion to open, open the public here.
So move.
Second.
Everyone in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public hearing now by open, hereby opened, so, uh. We read the, uh, the law out loud? Yeah, okay, all right, this is the, this is a, a proposed law, uh, to, um, uh. Give the, uh, board of trustees. Uh, the power to appoint the clerk treasurer, Mr. Mr. Fusco here was appointed by, uh, the mayor. And, uh, the board would like to have the power, or at least some of the, some. Members of the board would like to have that power instead, so, um. Anybody like to talk about why the board should have the power to appoint the clerk treasurer and not the mayor? Yeah, anyone, it's a public hearing, it's a public hearing, sure. Say your name, please.
My name is Paul Ryan, I live at, uh, three fourteen Livingston Avenue.
Great.
And I was fortunate enough to serve almost ten years on the town of Mamaronek. First appointed as a councilman. And then as a deputy supervisor, and then as a supervisor. Upon the resignation of. Well, first the resignation of a councilman. And last is a resignation of a supervisor. So, as you're, I think you discussed last week, town law says. It's a majority rule on all these appointments, on the three laws that you have in mind. I think this is more like a democracy than anything else. Also said, since every village by state law has to be part of the town. Why have it to think? Just because the mayor wants. More power. Now, why don't you pretend for a second that you're all councilmen, you're a deputy supervisor? And somebody comes in, male or female, the supervisors, I want the power to do all these appointments. What would your reaction be? I'm sure it would be swift. So what I'm asking is that you do the reverse here. That you'd be like the town, you take away some of this authority from the mayor and give it to the majority of the board.
Right.
That's it.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it, and thank you for being brief, that's, uh, much appreciated. Anyone else?
So, um, I'm Randy.
Bring the mic down, Randy.
I'm short, too. I'm at five forty long terrace, um. So I want to discuss these three laws, I'm not sure my interpretation, because I did read the documentation. Is correct, but the way I read this, is that if this is done today on July twenty fifth, and if it is. Uh. And can it be actually approved today as well, even though it's only the first hearing of this law?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay, so, and maybe my point's not as valid. But the way I read it was, um, if this was done and we have to do a special election, if you get in. Under the, uh, time limit where the November ballot, this can be placed on by the board of elections. That's one thing, but if you don't get it, and there are objections, and the village taxpayers have to pay for this. A special election, and a special election, for what reason, I really want to know. Because I thought according to NICOM village law, that is the way this works. So it's not that we're going against town law, I thought this is the way to NICOM village law works. It's also been in, uh, a precedent for many, many years, and I don't know why we would suddenly change it now. And might have nothing to do with the fact that two trustees are retiring, and this is something they want to put forward now. But it looks a little suspicious to me, or as John Hofstadter would say, the optics aren't good. So, I just feel like this is something that we should stick with the way it is, it's worked and served us well, and, um. You know, if it isn't broken, why fix it? I mean, was there an egregious act that occurred? I mean, Logi Fusco is a fabulous clerk treasurer, and to pinch his character, you know, he's worked for us for fifteen and a half. At, at least fifteen to seventeen years, so, um, I personally think if it works and it isn't broken. Then let's just keep it as it is, I respect the board and whatever decisions they make, but I feel for the public, we don't need this.
All right, thank you, Randy, all right. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Robin Kramer, before I started, I have a question, when you asked for speakers, you said. And I ask this because in other municipalities, it's done differently, you said, is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor or who thinks this is a good idea?
So, oh, you know what, if I said that, it just came out of my mouth and it didn't, uh, uh, you know, uh.
Okay, because I didn't know if you took, if you were going to have speakers in favor.
Oh, no, 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 or you, or you hate the idea.
Okay, so now I will go, go to my point.
Do you have an opinion?
I do have.
Okay, let's hear it.
Um, so. I am, I do not think this is, these laws are a good idea, so I'm going to speak generally, and then I have a specific comment on, on this, the first law. E, uh, so. My general comment is. New York State adopted village law many, many years ago, and in adopting village law. It presumably analyzed and made a decision as to where certain powers should lie. And it thought in the, with the best of intentions, and after studying this, that the mayor should have certain powers. And the board of trustees should have certain powers. The proposed law now is saying, hey, village law, hey, New York State. We don't think what you have done, notwithstanding what town law may say or what the town of Mamaronek may do. We, village board of trustees, do not think that New York State law is good. And we believe that we need to change it because it isn't good, I'm not sure why it isn't good. Uh, I do think that what's happening is the board of trustees wants to arrogate to itself. Powers that were given to the mayor. It sort of reminds me of what happened in Wisconsin last year, when the Wisconsin legislature, for purely political reasons. Decided that it need to take away many, many powers from the governor. And that seems to be, and I don't honestly know what the reasons are, what the politics are. Um, as to why this is being done, but. The board of trustees is giving to itself power that New York State, in its wisdom, many years ago, decided belonged to the mayor. And I do not understand why we should do it, and I see no reason to do it now. Now, my specific comment, though, on the first law is that I'm reading, if I, I couldn't print these things out, so I may. Um, have to go back and forth to my, um.
That's, printing is so twentieth century.
Yeah, sorry, I, I couldn't, my printer wasn't working today, so, um, I couldn't print these out. Car, right now, the board of trustees. Where is this board of trustees? Authority of board of trustees, so this is nine, five, G. The has, so the. The board of trustees shall have all of the authority granted to it imposed by section four, four twelve of the village law of the state of New York and the village law. Including the authority to appoint the, the village manager, village clerk, and village treasurer. I'm looking at the proposed local law, didn't make any changes to that, so I'm not quite sure. What changes the proposed local law is making, as near as I can tell, when I looked at it. All it seemed to be doing was moving some language, because the only part that's bolded is the addition of the word and. The removal of the words and police officials, and the insertion of the words and police officer. Which is given to the board of trustees by the Westchester County Police Act on Consolidated Law. So it looks like what's happening is the. Proposed law is moving some language around, but not making any substantive changes. And I don't know the correct answer with respect to what happens with the special election, but if we're looking for a completely meaningless act, that seems to be it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else on this, um, this first law would like to speak? Welcome back, Glenn.
Uh, just a couple of things. Number one, understand, they're not passing a law. They're passing the opportunity for a referendum to be put on the ballot. That it is the citizens of the village of Mamaronek will make the decision whether to pass. Or to deny these powers to the trustees. The ultimate decision is going to be in the hands. Of the village of Mamaronek residents. And whoever came up here and spoke elegantly against the law. You, you can do it through the entire election period. There shouldn't be, a need for a special election, from what I understand. It's ninety days, if they get it up to all day, the board of elections. Uh, by early August, we're under the deadline, so it wouldn't be part of the general election. I don't think that they are looking to single out the clerk treasurer. I wouldn't even bring up the subject. Other than the fact that I'm very, very fond of Logi. I even have spoken privately on the matter. To, uh, trustees, and I see no indication that anybody. Is unhappy in any way, shape, or form with the job that Logi does, in fact, I hear nothing. But huge compliments, and, uh, for myself. I don't think there's ever been more transparency in this village. Under any other clerk treasurer than Logi. And I much, much appreciate it. And I think that should be said. The referendum is more about the, um, just what the different positions are. The last one. Which there's two, one, at one time, Lou, you said that even if it gets passed, we'll just throw it out in December. It with, 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 with a new board. That, that should not, why would you throw out a referendum if it happens to pass by the public?
I, I, I would, I, um. It could be thrown out in, uh, by a subsequent board, and, and, uh, and that's what I said, right? And, and, and I don't, I don't think, I don't think it's popular, I don't, and I don't think it would pass, and it may not even ever get on the referendum, but that's beside the point.
Lastly, the mayor threatening to sue the village. The, the mayor has lambasted. Members of the public who at times have sued the village over different issues, how it's a waste of village money. Yet he, because he wants to protect the power of the mayor, is willing to stand up and say, I will sue the village. That's his prerogative, I have no problem with that. But let's not have, you know, double standards on his part, and quite frankly, that shouldn't be a reason. If you like what's being proposed, you vote. Yet, if you're unhappy with what's being proposed. Yet, if you're unhappy with what's being proposed, well, Nick, that's, that's fair enough. Everybody's gonna have plenty of time for publicity and everything, and that's what you should be voting on.
All right.
The rest of the things are all just, you know, chachi, as they used to say in the, in the movie industry. Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn. All right. And we agree with you about Augie. Anybody else want to talk? Rob, yes, yes, ma'am.
My name is Tony Ryan. I've been in three fourteen leagues tonight.
All right, Tony.
Hi, everybody. Um, what I really want to say is, I have served on the board. I've served for eight years under four different mayors. Three mayors were Republican, one was a Democrat. Everyone had a different style, and at the organization meeting, some of the mayors discussed who they were likely to appoint. It was never, I mean, he's been around forever, so that was never a real part of the discussion. But some of the other positions you're looking at were part of discussion, different commissions, and who would, who would be the chairs of those, and who would appoint those people. Much of the time, the discussion, I believe personally, that when you discuss the kinds of chairs that you want, the kinds of people in different positions, the different perspectives of the people sitting around the table with you, who will also be working with those people, just as the mayor will be working with those people, bring a very nice feeling of welcome to whoever's chosen, because that person certainly will feel that everyone wanted him. And it is, I think, a very good thing to have people feel that they work with everyone and not with just one person who appointed them. And I think sometimes that sad message that will be sent. So I, I really would encourage you, this is something I think would be good for the people in the village to know about, to educate about how our, how our system does work. I've mentioned a lot of people don't know that certain, certain positions are mayoral appointments. And I think that, excuse me if you pursue this, and I think you should pursue it. I think this is a process to also educate our residents about their government. So I would say, I don't think it's trying to take away powers. I think it's trying to empower a board to act together, creatively, collegially, to welcome new people into positions when there's a need to do that. So I encourage you to put it out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert Stark, seven oh four, one report. I'm the traffic commissioner. I'm mainly talking about traffic. I want to thank Mr. Tippett. Uh, I was so happy to hear what he said, and without repeating what he said, I would say ditto to everything he said. And two things I would comment on. One is the issue of the mayor threatening to take legal action. After listening to the mayor for the last another years criticize residents for filing litigation when they deemed it was appropriate and necessary for him to threaten to file litigation because he is not getting what he wants, says everything to me. Thank you, Mr. Tippett. I am in favor of having the residents make this decision in November.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, oh.
What happened to you?
You okay there?
No. Jared Winchester.
Yes, sir.
You know, motives, always stuff about motives sometimes, you know, and judgments. So like, why didn't this come up last year? Why did this come up the year before?
It did.
And what would happen?
Well.
Because.
Can I, I'm a dumpster earth the clock in him. What happened? What happened was that we adopted this very law in December of twenty twenty. And we adopted the law to harmonize the removal authority for, for planning and zoning board members in twenty twenty one. And they were never delivered to the Board of Elections, so they didn't get on the referendum, so we're having to do it all over again. It was just a mistake. The staff, someone, staff didn't get it to Board of Elections. And so this is the second go around for those two laws.
Because I, I was watching your work session, and I watched you guys for about thirty five minutes argue over the word tweak. I watched you guys argue over the word as is. And I don't know how, if a vacancy opened up next week, how you guys would be able to appoint anyone. Because three of you guys clearly are not going to vote with the other two. It just seems that way. And it's like, I'm watching with three Democrats, three Republicans, and it doesn't work. That's why I think the mayor has that authority to appoint. And I understand, you feel like you're left out of the process, but the way you guys operate, the way, I mean, you're all Democrats, and the way you operate is ridiculous. I mean, you gotta think about what you're doing, because two of you guys are going to be gone. And it's going to be a makeup. It could be three to two, it could be another five. But will you get anything done if you're not insane? And I don't think you will. I think this is ridiculous, because there's certain powers ready for certain reasons. And we're going to come up now, and I'll take you at your word, that it just didn't go, get through the last time. Maybe there's a reason, you know, just think about it. Just on the way out, it seems like she mentioned Wisconsin, and I know we all felt the same way when it happened in Wisconsin. And it was clear that on the way out, people just want to change the rules. And I just think you need to really think about it. But people have the right to vote on it. I just don't think this is something that you can vote on.
Thank you, Jared. Anyone else? Do we have any hands? No? Okay. Now, do we, we do a public hearing on each law?
Yes. The Board of Trustees can talk about it.
Okay, I, I, well, let's get through the three public hearings, and then we talk again.
We have.
At a time.
Okay, one at a time. All right. May I have a get? Okay.
Of course.
Jared hit it on the, on the head. Yeah, we, we, doing things by committee sounds good, sounds attractive. But, but somebody's got to be in charge. And people, and I believe the people in this village like their mayor, they like having a mayor. They like having somebody to call who can take responsibility and not hide behind, you know, majority votes and this and that. And this happened in the committee, and, you know, somebody who just does it. And the idea that the, the, the mayor can appoint the clerk treasurer is fine. I think that's fine. I don't think you want, you want necessarily the candidate who is the lowest common denominator that, that five people can agree on. And, and that's my feeling on it. The mayor's the mayor for a reason. He runs for mayor. People can run against it. You elect the mayor because you want that. If you want him just to be another trustee, just call him a trustee, but he's the mayor. So, and, and, and we'd like to say it's a weak mayor. Well, it's really, I think, strong village manager. I think it's the way, the, the, the structure, but some people call it weak mayor. But he's weak enough. He's not, he's not, he doesn't have unlimited powers. He's only got a couple of, a couple of things that he does. If you, if you change this, it's going to turn into a five-member board that just pontificates and deliberates and, 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 you know, and, and somebody's got to pick the direction, and somebody has to lead. And I think we need a mayor to lead, whether you like the mayor or not. This mayor, the next mayor, the last mayor, I think the village needs a mayor. I'm done. Thank you.
Okay, I'll go. So I, you know, I, I don't agree with Lou. I think that, and I, and I am saddened that we adopted this law in twenty twenty, and it didn't get to the Board of Elections, and, and we're doing that again. I think that's, that's a slip on everybody. And, but I would say that the concept of a strong, a strong manager, weak mayor, form of government is, is, is a concept that this village chose. And so when that happened, many of the mayor's authority, powers were transferred, and Bob did a pretty nifty memo about that, that's on in the backup. But many of the powers were transferred to the, either, either the manager or the Board of Trustees, and a few weren't. It's kind of odd that in this situation, the village clerk treasurer is appointed by the mayor, but reports to the village manager and doesn't report to the Board of Trustees. And I think that, that gives that person really two bosses. The one, the one who makes the hiring decision and the one who makes the supervisory decision. So I think it would be better for the entire Board of Trustees to be appointing the clerk treasurer, which gives, then gives the clerk treasurer the ability to report to the entire Board of Trustees, not just the mayor and/or the village manager. And so that's why I think this law should pass. I, I mean, we should speak of the others and one on one, but I think it's a more.
One at a time.
We should do it. We have to open, we have to do everything one at a time.
Well, then, then let's stick to one, the one, one.
But a lot of people have, you know, may, may have made comments that I think are relative into everything.
Everything, yes.
So, and, so, I mean, Bob, you look like.
Let's, let's wait till the other ones come up.
All I want to say is, you have to open and close each public year.
Yeah, let's, let's stick to four. Dan?
I just think that it, it's a better approach for the government. There are lots, there are lots of reasons for it, but most of them, I think Nora has already gone through.
All right. Thank you. That's, that's to the point. Appreciate it. Victor?
I'll be brief as well. Number one, this, this process started these five or six years ago in the last iteration. It's been a work in progress on how to define this village manager form of government, which is quite, quite, quite unique, and actually allows the village to tailor itself. Aside from, from, from the typical, from the model view of, of what is, what is, what is the village law in New York. So that actually the Americas exercised that opportunity. I strongly believe, even if it's difficult, even if we face all the problems with the, with the board, sometimes getting, getting consensus, the relationship with the manager, that still the voters, many, many years back, were right. The village manager form of government is, as an example, that I, I, I really believe in. I raised as an example for the rest of the world, and I think it has problems, but it's still a very, very good one. And in, in order to continue that, it needs to be, continue to be perfected. So this, this, this goes to all the hearings, but in particular, the one of the clerk treasurer. And of course, number one, it has nothing to do with Augie. Actually, even with some of the issues he has, just by transparency, putting everything out there, knowing as how the budget is evolving, just kind of put out that, that, that he's, he's, he's responding to all of us. Manager, board, and, and, and of course, the mayor. So, so I, I do think that this, this, it's, it's, it's a worth, it's a move in that direction. If the voters don't want it, then, then they can, they can decide for, for, for themselves, so.
Okay. Thank you, Victor. Appreciate it. All right, let's move to.
Close the public hearing.
Let's close the public hearing. Move, motion, close the public hearing, please. All in favor? All right. All right. Now we're going to reopen, open the public hearing.
Now, I'm going to make a motion to adopt the local law, local law E.
Oh, I see. Okay, all right. I thought we were doing all three at once.
Can't do it all separately.
Like this in high school.
It wasn't like this in high school. Yeah, okay. I move to adopt proposed local law E.
Second.
Augie Colerone?
Trustee. He's young?
No.
Snatchers?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
So anybody, the, the mayor is on vacation. Wonder. All right, let's open the public hearing. A motion to open the public hearing, P L L F twenty twenty two, removal authority of planning and zoning board members. This is a, a law that pretty much mirrors the, the other one, except it deals with planning board and zoning board members. The, the board has the authority to appoint them now, but the mayor has the authority to, to remove?
Yes.
Yes, and, and.
That is the result of another referendum.
Yes, so, so that, that there, they want to, the proposal is to make them the same. And let's hear, anybody, let's, a motion to open the public hearing.
Open the public hearing.
Second.
Augie?
Trustees, Young?
Yes.
Snatchers?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody like to speak on this?
Can I explain the law a little bit?
Sure, yeah.
So basically, again, we adopted the same law in, I think it was January of twenty twenty one, but it didn't get to the Board of Elections. And in. Yes, thank you. Okay. So we adopted this law. Can you hear me now? Is that better? Well, the microphone is actually, I think the microphone's actually here for LMCTV, not, so it's, but I'll try to speak, I'll try to speak, I'll try to speak loudly. So we adopted this law in December of twenty twenty one, and, January twenty twenty one, but it did not get to the Board of Elections. And in, in two thousand and sixteen, there was a referendum transferring the appointment authority for planning and zoning board members from the mayor to the Board of Trustees. Typically, the appointing authority also has removal authority. And the removal of that wasn't harmonized, so the removal authority wasn't transferred. So there was a situation in which an individual was, there was, the mayor held a hearing to remove a member of the planning board, ultimately chose not to remove that member, but had the mayor remove the member of the planning board, by a vote of three trustees, that person could be put back. And basically, the, the reason that the appointment authority was transferred from the mayor to the entire board was, which is how it works in the town, it's how it works in most cities, it's just one of those, you know, village law things that didn't get resolved when we adopted the village manager, strong manager, form of government, is to, is to make those, those appointments, which in this village have been extraordinarily political, less political, and by giving a, having to have a consensus of, you know, of a majority of board members, appointing people to the planning and zoning boards. So that was a two thousand and sixteen referendum, and this is just sort of cleaning up a mistake that was made then.
All right, that's, that's one way to look at it. Anybody else have an opinion there? Sure.
So thank you, trustee Lucas, for clearing that up. So in two thousand and sixteen, there was a referendum, and it was enacted because our mayor at the time, Rowan Rosenblum, was having people purposely resign from both zoning and planning board in, in November, in order for them to be pulled over appointments for the next annual meeting in December. So that's why that referendum happened. That's how it happened. Am I correct?
Well, but he had the authority to appoint, and not the Board of Trustees. So this, this, basically what happened is with that referendum, which I know you were very supportive of, the, the entire board was given the authority to appoint planning and zoning board members.
And actually, I think this is a good law, because it corrects that and makes it more genius. So I fully support this one.
Thanks, Randy.
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll speak up here. I don't like it. I don't like this particular law, because I believe it, it, it interrupts what, what sort of mirrors, it, it checks and balances that an advisor can set. Because if the mayor removes somebody from the board, the trustees can override that removal. It's like a veto override. It's like what happens in, in Washington. The mayor does something, and then the, and the, and the legislative body can override it, but they're taking a stand. What would happen otherwise, let's say in this, in this particular instance where Ms. Goldstein was cited for ethics violation, and the mayor, let's say the mayor had decided to remove her. I would love to have seen this board override that, say, oh, no, we, we don't, we don't, we don't want to remove her for an ethics violation. Take the stand, rather than do what it usually does, is act by inaction. So that, so I believe the checks and balances is, is, is much more elegant a solution. And I think putting all the power in, in the boards, both hiring and, and reprimanding and removing people from boards for, for wrongdoing In uh in the boards, both hiring and 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 reprimanding and removing people from boards for uh for wrongdoing. Is allowing um. Allowing uh behind the scenes uh uh manipulation to take place and and things to happen by not happening. So I uh I I like it the way it is. I I think the mayor should be able to uh act and. The board has the power to to oh override it. So you don't need to to undo what the mayor can do. There you go. That's my opinion.
My my thoughts on this are a little different than my thoughts before, and I appreciate what um. Uh trustee, what Nora said on, you know, on the history of this. But I have to say that to me, when I read this first, my first thought was about something completely different. It was about the fact that the word cause is not defined. Any member of assuming this law is passed or the mayor right now, so obviously it doesn't matter. If if we're gonna fix something, why aren't we fixing the word cause? Right now, if any member of the board, uh if the new law is passed, right now it's the mayor. The mayor decides that he doesn't. Want somebody on the board for cause. Cause is not defined. Cause could be therefore anything that he thinks is just cause. Or when it's the Board of Trustees, three votes can decide that somebody has cause. Somebody on the board. A board member, planning board member voted for a project and the trustees don't like the project. Maybe just causes arguing that it was really a bad vote that they didn't fulfill their responsibilities. That could be caused. So. If we're gonna fix something, let's fix what needs to be fixed. I don't know the right answer of whether the trustee and since. The three trustees who vote for cause, and again, I don't know what that cause will be, cannot reappoint the person since they've presumably. Kicked off that person, you have no definition of cause. So you're either. Leading to a lawsuit when somebody says that wasn't caused, or you've removed somebody for no just reason. I think if we're gonna fix something. Let's fix what's broken and not what isn't necessarily broken. I don't really have, again, as I say, much of an opinion on this. Particular one, except to repeat the question of moving powers. But again, since I think as Randy said, because we've moved the power already to a point. Maybe the power should be. On the other hand, Lou says, no, we have an overriding power. I don't know the right answer. I'm not gonna speak to it. I am saying let's fix the real problem. And not the, I don't know kind of what's perceived as the problem, but let's fix the real problem.
All right, thank you very much.
Robin, I think you also have to say that your speaking is an individual values inappropriate.
I never even said that I was on a board, so I'm not sure that it would be relevant to.
Are you on a board?
I am.
Oh, you you always need to say that you're here, uh you're a member of the board, but you're not speaking uh for that board.
I am not speaking for the zoning Board of Appeals. I am speaking for myself and on the for on public law E. I was also speaking for myself. And if I speak on the next law, I will also be speaking for myself. I'm simply a member of a board. I am simply. A resident of the village of the.
Thank you. That's that's just a legal requirement. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
And by the way, Rob- Robin is very, very good at her job on the board. I've watched her many a night. We've had a few encounters over the years. I too am on board. And this comes back to what I said, uh in uh the public session of our speaking. What is, what is cause? What is justification for taking somebody off the off of a board? Because I don't like your shirt, it's blue, because I don't like your shirt, it's red, because I don't like um. That you are a pro builder, you're anti builder. Maybe you don't like somebody who. Points out certain things with the budget that you don't agree with. You have to make it very difficult to remove members of boards. Right now, you have a lot of open seats at boards. You can't even get enough volunteers. If it turns out that, you know what? The sun, the sun, the sun was a little cloudy today. We want to get rid of a board member. Then then why would anybody want to serve on a board? And why would anybody want to serve honestly on a board? We're 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 put on boards for reasons. We're put on boards because we're considered intelligent, the subject matter. Which comes before us and that we have opinions that may not. Go lockstep with the the mayor or the four trustees. And it may be a completely alternate opinion, but at least it gets heard. And at that point. You can make a decision one way or the other, and that's what you want. You want alternative opinions. Or confirmation of what you're doing. That way you have the best information to make decisions as a village. And it should be very difficult to remove somebody who is honestly. Trying to do the best job they can on any board in the village. Thank you.
So are you for this or against it?
I I don't have a problem with the law. It causes the problem. That has to be, that has to be solved.
Before Robert speaks, can I ask for other questions?
Sure.
So the the word cause is from state law, right?
Uses the word cause.
Right. So if we wanted to change it and be more specific about why a planning or zoning board member could be removed, could we? We could. So if we wanted to define cause, not that we should do it tonight, if we wanted to define cause. Okay, thank you.
Sounds like we were talking about earlier. I'm sorry. It's like, uh you know, the whatever.
I mean, and and just to Robin's point, it has to be, there has to be a public, a public hearing. It's not just. Yeah, there has to be a public hearing. No, no, not here. The ca- the removal has to be. No, no. So that's, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stark, welcome back.
Um I'm in favor of this referendum for the consistency, and I feel that I would never say this, but I completely agree with Randy. I I also want to comment on what uh Chip was talking about, which is removing somebody. Uh I was very offended at the discussion during the work session about the discussion and the. Motion to remove members of the Traffic Commission for cause. And there were some issues where, well, if somebody is drunk or if they commit crime, those are grounds. I thought that was so inappropriate. And as a member of the Traffic Commission, I was offended. That's all I want to say.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Alrighty.
To close the hearing.
Uh move to close the hearing.
Second.
Call the roll?
Trustees, Young?
Yep.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Okay, so now we um wanna make a motion to adopt the law?
We'll do adopt.
Second.
Call the roll.
Trustees, Young?
No.
Trustee Natchez?
Yes.
Trustee Lucas?
Yes.
Trustee to four?
Yes.
Okay. Let's go to the third one. Public hearing on. P L L G twenty two, twenty twenty two filing, filling of the Board of Trustees vacancy. This is one that's close to my heart. This is um when a trustee vacancy comes up, uh the mayor has the authority to appoint someone to fill out that term. Uh that's how I got here. And um and that uh. Usually is a validated subsequently by the voters or not. And um so uh. This uh proposal would take that that uh thought that uh. Authority from the mayor to the Board of Trustees. And um. So let's uh entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Calling the roll sometimes, sometimes I'm just uh.
Okay.
Depends on the mood, you know?
It's more important to close the roll for the actual vote.
Yeah. Okay, so let's um uh we we're 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 opening the public hearing. Does anybody have uh any opinions on whether or not. It should be the mayor or the five trustees who appoint a vacant, oh no, four trustees, because if there's a vacancy on the on the board, it would be four. Uh four trustees, trustees who point the vacancy. Any uh any input?
Robin Kramer, I'm speaking for myself and not as a member of the zoning board of.
Excellent.
Okay, um and my only thought on this is, um of of the of appointment of the Board of Trustees, I would say this is the only one. That I think is a valid one because there are five trustees, in theory of four trustees, and they were elected by the voters, so they represent the voters more than. A single mayor does. So if you're appointing another member to the Board of Trustees, that seems reasonable. On the other hand, I will say we have had a vacancy on the Z D A for five months. No one's been appointed. The Board of Trustees does not. Is full, is busy, and can't do it as opposed to as it is. And all of these laws are giving the Board of Trustees more power, which in my mind is. More power to not do something. I think that you have a mayor for. And and someone said, I think, I think, uh trust, I think Nora said it, but I can't remember which one. Someone said it, it could have been a public speaker, said. Um when the village adopted the strong village manager, weak mayor system, they left these laws out. I would say they intentionally didn't include these laws. Just because you have a strong village manager doesn't mean. You need to have everything being done by the top Board of Trustees. And I will say, and I know this is not this public hearing, but I didn't realize this. On the uh clerk treasurer position, um that the fact. Never mind, I sorry, lost my train of thought there. Um I'll just say that the board, the trustees are already different, having difficulty in fulfilling their responsibility. It is not time to add more responsibilities to the village trustees. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, you you you, I think you know how I feel on this. Uh I I I think you got, somebody's got, somebody's got to drive the bus and um. You can't put, I mean, and and with this particular uh vacancy that happened, there was uh the uh the Village Democratic Committee. Tried to uh uh have its input with the mayor to to choose, to choose the next uh uh trustee. On the, on their own. That's a closed committee of thirty people that that meets outside the public purview. And uh by the way, many of the people who spoke or speaking and backing this law belong to that committee, and I have a collection of emails here. All from people who serve in that committee. I'm on that committee, Nora's on that committee, Dan's on that committee, and Victor's on that committee. Um these are, these are people who meet and discuss uh politics, you know, among themselves and their own bylaws. They take votes, secret votes, and then and then the majority, sixteen. Rules and they don't sign that, you know, and those on their opinions. So the the this is, I believe that many of these proposals are coming out of that committee. I don't think uh. I don't think that's a mystery.
I having been the person who um worked on these proposals. I I I'm offended by that because I don't need a committee to tell me what to do.
Well, you're on the committee. And here's another member of the committee, Mr. Teager.
These proposals did not come out of the committee. These proposals came out of the memo that was written actually by our village attorney. Talking about what some of the inconsistencies were that we had. Some of these things got resolved in two thousand and sixteen, and it's been. An ongoing.
I would say the desire, desire for the board to appoint the vacant trustee is something very that the committee, the Democratic Committee is very desirable.
Maybe they hopped on a good idea.
Oh, yeah, it's a great idea. Just like not having a a a primary. All right, Mr. Teager, can I help you?
Yes, I I just um question, I don't remember when the Democratic Committee sought to. Point.
They reached out to the mayor, uh when the, when uh when Kelly went strong.
Or a member of the.
Oh, the the committee, it came, it came uh uh as a communication from the committee, I believe, unsigned. Am I correct?
I I don't think you're correct.
I don't, I go to, I think all the meetings of the committee, I don't remember.
Was it just the chairman? Maybe it was just the chairman?
That the idea that the Democratic Committee is some dark group that meets behind closed doors to manipulate village. Is, you know, I think far from the truth.
Well, I I I'm a member of that committee. I've attended it with you.
Okay. But you weren't on the committee when you were up for appointment. I was, and I don't remember ever having a meeting. Thank you.
Well, a lot of things come out of that committee that there are never meetings on.
By definition.
We're talking about this law now.
I understand. All I'm saying is by definition, something that comes out of the committee has to come out of the committee. If it comes out some other way, it's coming from an individual. This is one of the. Kind of things that's missed many times in the village, that things are attributed to committees when they don't come from the committee. Committee has to take a vote. That's what makes it a decision of a committee.
I wish you would go back and talk to your committee chair. Thank you very much for coming by. All right, anybody else want to talk on the uh on the Board of Trustees? Getting the authority to appoint vacancies to the Board of Trustees.
Move to close the hearing.
Second. No, well, I I anyway, close the hearing. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All right, all right, okay, here's closed. All right.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Call the roll.
Trustees, Young?
No.
Trustee Natchez?
Yes.
Trustee Lucas?
Yes.
Trustee to four?
Yes. I said, yes.
Okay, thank you. All right. That's done. Let's go to some actual business now. All right, um we have before us abstracts of audited vouchers. This is where we pay our bills. Um this first group, can somebody fill me in on what we're looking at here?
This one is for two million one hundred and forty one thousand.
Yeah, I'll take care of it, Dan. Hang on, I've got them out of order here.
So I guess we need to ask whether anybody has any questions or concerns.
Somebody have any questions or concerns?
About this?
Yeah.
Okay, this is a, this first um uh collective vouchers is um two million one hundred and forty one thousand six hundred and five dollars twenty five cents. Dan, characterize this for me. What do we look, or or Augie, what's on this?
So currently, we're doing item two B, and this is the abstract of the audit. This is the abstract for the village of America. This includes all village bills.
Right.
Currently before the board for approval. This is every department in the village. That has made purchases during these last two weeks.
So these are, these are our standard, uh standard bills, is it?
Standard AP bills.
Um uh my colleague has looked at it. Does anybody have any questions about items on the uh that you're seeing on the abstract? No question?
Move adoption.
Okay.
The public has questions.
I was gonna say, Augie, it's it's uh very large because it's a million plus from the library, right? That's why it's so big.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's not usual with me.
Thank you. I just didn't hear, is this twenty twenty one, twenty two, or is this twenty two, twenty three? Which one are we on?
Twenty two, twenty three.
Okay, I have some comments. Page six. Bottom page, G H D Consulting Services for the investigation of D E C dam violations. I guess I have two questions. Um G H D is a primary. Consultant to Westchester Joint Water Works, and I'm just wondering. Consultant to Westchester Joint Water Works, and I'm just wondering if we. Reached out to any other engineering firms.
Dan, can you answer that?
GHD is a firm who's worked with the village, uh, both the current and their former incarnation stores in Wheeler. They perform a number of reports, uh, for the village as well as the dam for his studies. And they helped prepare our emergency action plans.
Right, my question was, were any other firms reached out to?
Uh, no.
No, okay. Um, the other question is, have, have they prepared a report? Uh, page seven, Keller Sessions Consulting. Uh, general engineering consultation, Colonial Port nine forty one, Taylor's Lane and one thirteen East Boston Post Road. I think these are all private entities, or is this an escrow amount, or is this, um? Coming out of taxpayers' pockets?
Augie, taxpayers' pockets.
Okay, any, I mean, nine forty one Taylor's Lane is a private residence that. Keller Sessions has been doing work on for months. I, I'm just not sure why taxpayers are paying for this.
I have to take a look at the invoice. It's possible that, uh, oftentimes when we, uh, pay bills among. We will charge multiple, uh, general ledger number accounts on a single voucher. But the description gets carried over to each payment. Uh, I have to look at the bill to see what, what the backup says.
So you're not sure if it's SPRO or not?
I, I admit I have not memorized.
Okay, yeah, I just generally list SPRO under separate lines, no?
Yes, we do. This is charged to fourteen forty four twenty one engineering. What Dan is referring to is that this bill may encompass this different account numbers, so there might be a section under SPRO. Unless he looks at the bill, he doesn't know what's allocated.
Okay, I, I, you know.
Kellid does work for the village and does SPRO work.
No, I understand, I understand. Page. Eight, all aspects wildlife. Kitten removal from DPW yard.
They're very cute.
I'm sorry? Okay, my question. I, I have no doubt, I've seldom seen an unchained. My question would be, why are we paying a separate fee for this when my understanding was? That the all specs, all aspects wildlife contract was, you know, basically for anything we needed in a monthly period.
Just an extra?
I believe it is, I think the, the, it's been a while since I've looked at the, uh. The RFP that we put out for this. Uh, I have to see if there's a, there's a allowance for certain. Additional work other than.
Right, but this is falls under this category.
Dan, can we look into that?
Collection is full of dead animals. This was a living animal that was having been trapped.
I'm sorry?
Oh.
This says dead animals, dead domestic animals. If this was a live kitten, it would have been trapped.
That's number three. Uh, that's number two. Number three says collection, removal or disposal of domestic animals from village property, both dead and alive. I hope they were alive. Their kids.
I have to check.
I, I would suggest that you hold the bill and.
What?
It's feral, you have to catch them.
Yeah.
I believe these are feral pets. That's why they had a trap. They're not going to come to you. They're not domesticated with you.
Right, but that's part of their general fee of five hundred and fifty dollars a month. I mean, a lot of months they don't come at all, so.
Can we look into that, Dan? Thank you.
Um, page nine, Janet King, New York, to clean the vacuum, this courtroom. And the judge's offices, I guess. I'm not sure if it's, it says all offices, but I think there's separate invoices for. Other spaces. My understanding of Janet King is they're the company we hired when the pandemic started. When there was concern that people could be infected from touching a table. That had COVID bacteria virus on them.
Do this have to do with the, um, with the environmental problems in the building?
No, no, um, David, Janet King was the company that, um, we had a, um, a cleaning service. They were unable to fulfill the obligations, so we terminated them. We brought on Janet King, I want to say, maybe it might be early twenty twenty, but as the, um. Pandemic came to be, uh, we had to force additional cleaning, uh, persons also when, uh. Uh, we were using this courtroom as the, uh, uh, for the FEMA, uh, center. Uh, we had them in here every day to clean, uh, so they, they've been our vendor for a couple of years now.
Okay, so is this invoice for all the village offices? I mean, it's five thousand dollars, so it seems like a lot for the courtroom and the judge's office. So that's my only question at this point.
I, I believe it is all, like, I get it.
It's for the entire month of June?
Correct.
And it's a weekly service to be in it then?
Some offices are cleaned daily.
Yeah.
I mean, I think the police department is cleaned daily, the salesmen daily. Uh, some of the other locations are, uh, two, two times a week, one day.
You can clean the, uh, police department every fifteen minutes, it wouldn't be enough.
I think the employees like, uh.
Page twenty one, Zanzimi, an emergency storm drain repair at six twenty seven Willow. The storm drains aren't, as far as I know, repaired on an emergency basis. Do you, do you have any idea why this was, it was an emergency? Or you don't know why?
Can I answer?
Yeah.
I believe this one was approved by the board as a, a pipe on the ground, which collapsed the road. Um, given the number of projects DPW had in the head of them, they had to sub it out because they couldn't get in touch in time. Believe a week or two weeks ago, the board approved this work.
So we have a sinkhole or something?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Exactly.
Grand Stat North America, temps for the building and planning department. Two grand for, it says, for seven three and seven ten.
Which page?
I'm sorry, what page, thirty? Um, and I'm just, that seems like a lot of, you know, either a couple of really busy days. Or, um, a lot of money, two grand for temps for.
Given that seven three and seven ten are a week apart, I would imagine that's, oh, you're two weeks worth of, of staff time.
Okay. Um, and the last one is Evergreen Arborist Tree Removals. Um, do you know if these went to the tree committee for their review, or to?
Page, page what?
The removals, I'm sorry, page thirty two. The new law requires that removals of village trees, um, go to the tree committee for their review.
So my question is. Is a growth, uh, requirement, right?
Well, yes, but that's for getting a permit. In the village, these are trees that the village removes. And the village, the new law does require the village notify the tree committee that this is happening.
Okay, it requires that the village, that the tree committee review, review the removals, not that they're notified.
Okay, can we find out?
I, I guess in closing, I would say, you know, and I've said this. A dozen times before, that state law requires that the board is supposed to know what you're actually paying for. And seemingly. All that seems to be explained tonight is the amounts and not particularly whether things have met the bar. So I think things like, um. You know, even though it's minor, the kitten removal, um. You know, we should know if that should have been covered under their monthly rate. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
There's another one here and I've lost it. Oh, that's, that's. Sign this one, right?
How's the amount, if anybody has any questions?
Okay. Okay, this next. What?
We have to vote on it.
Oh. You told me to sign it.
I did tell you to sign it. We have to vote on it.
That's for approving that, uh, the, the, the last, uh, give me the number again.
Two million one forty one, six oh five point twenty five.
Okay, um, call the roll, please.
Vote to approve.
Vote you to approve.
So, so moved.
Call the roll, please.
Second.
Uh, Dan, you seconded it.
I'll second.
Okay, oh, okay.
Trustees, young?
Yes.
Trustee Natchez?
Yes.
Trustee Lucas?
Yes.
Trustee to four?
Yes. Yes.
By the time we got to the end of this, I'd be, uh.
You'll be, you'll be ready.
All right, this next, uh, uh, report is for twenty thousand dollars, five hundred and forty three dollars, two cents. This is, if I recall.
Twenty one, twenty two fills.
Yeah, all right. Are there any questions about this one? Mr. Tigger? Any questions on this next one?
No.
Okay, thanks, all right, all right, um. Will we approve it? Call the roll, please.
Trustees, young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Received.
Okay, there you go. Losing momentum.
Do that.
All right, let's, uh, move on now to old business. Time limit comments, three minutes on this, uh, if anybody wants to talk. A resolution authorizing a change order number five for paving at the Hillside Avenue Bridge. That's to be held, never mind. Okay, um, resolution authorizing purchase of capital items identified needed at Hurricane Isaías and Ida after. Action meetings. This is a group of, uh, this is a large collection of equipment that we, um, we went over during the work session. Stuff that I think, I think we need, but, uh, does anybody want to talk about it?
I mean, a lot of it is for emergencies and there's a big chunk of it is a crane that we really need for other. I mean, we need the crane for emergencies, but we also need a crane, and we've been renting a crane, so it's something. We've talked about purchasing, we couldn't.
Yeah.
Okay, so the crane, a big chunk of this is a crane that's needed for emergencies, but that we also use on a regular basis. And we have been renting a crane for a while, so.
We were lucky during Ida because we happened to have it on hand, uh, when the storm hit us, so, um. We did not have to wait for it to arrive. We could put it immediately into use from that now on. It will be here, we'll have it, so that's important. The other items are, are, include a, um, a transport trailer, uh, some, some boats, uh, uh. Pretty cool, uh, uh, power saws.
Pumps, water pumps.
Yes, uh, uh, just, just all the stuff you need for the, uh, type of climate disasters we are expecting and, um.
The actual.
Yeah, I mean, this is stuff we need. I mean, i- it's expensive, uh, but, um. I don't think we have a choice.
And it also includes a trailer that will be kept at Harbor Island, which will store the items. And the backup for what's being purchased is on the work session agenda, not on this agenda.
And there's pictures of everything and, uh, all very.
And, um, I would just reiterate that we need to adopt a capital budget plan. We have a capital budget. But it's more than we can fund in a short period of time, and so we do need to. Prioritize and figure out, because for every dollar we spend on one thing, we can't spend it on something else.
Every, well, all this money we were spending on, on these essential items. Uh, means that's, at some point in the capital budget, we're going to get to a place where we just.
Can't do something they might want to do. So I think we need to be more on top of that. And I see a couple of budget committee nodding.
That said, we're not in bad shape financially, so that's, that's the good news. Okay, so we're authorizing this, uh, this purchase of, of the items that we, uh, we can motion on that?
So moved.
Second. Call the roll.
I think. Does Bernie want to talk about it?
Sure, sure, absolutely.
About the crane and the wood. Um, wouldn't it make more sense to store all that stuff at the fire department and have the fire department? Pay for all this stuff? Shouldn't it be on the, you know, the fire department budget for the crane and stuff like that and the boat? I mean, why would you store a flood? Boat or boat for the flood rescue down at the harbor? When the first place that the firemen go to and the first responders go to, they go to the fire department. And, you know, I mean, they have the room, they can store the generators, they can store all, all the stuff. You don't need to buy a trailer. And then put it down in the harbor and then leave it inside there and then, you know, the, the weather, the hot, the cold destroys all the equipment. Why not leave it in a climate controlled building? And I'm sure there's room for, you know, rescue boats at the fire department. And my question is, my, uh, you know, why, I, I think that should be in the fire department budget and not.
Fire department, okay.
So, I mean, for everything, this is supposed to be charged from the capital. So it's not charged to one specific department, it's charged to, uh, the capital fund. Uh, and not everything is proposed to be stored in this trailer. Uh, you know, a lot of items are, uh, there are certain items which will likely be stored in various firehouses. You're for the, for the most part, you know, things like, uh, waiters, uh, we can store in the trailer. Public works on when they're working, prior to getting to the river. So it's, not, not everything is going to be stored in one location.
And, and with, for some time ago, and correcting me if I'm wrong, colleagues, that the, the board. Authorized the creation of a more, of emergency management, uh, team that Jerry was putting together, am I correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's in the budget.
It's in the budget, yeah, we did, we did that, so, so, um, uh, i- it's, it's a coordinated, uh, um, uh. Group of department heads with the police, with the fire. Um, when these things happen. It ain't just a fire department. Uh, I mean, you know. Usable governments have to have an OEM. We're a coastal community, an atomic climate change. We need, we need resources.
That's fine, I, no, I get that, but I mean, they're the first responders, they have to.
They are among.
Should be on their premises.
They, they, they had, we have first, we have fire, we have police, those are our first response.
And what was the crane used for to lift the?
Crane is kept at the harbor, right?
Yeah, well, it's, it's used to collect debris out of the river.
For that.
It was.
Was it the, was it the sea container that they pulled out of the cranking?
It was, yeah, a lot of stuff, and many more, and putting that.
It's, it's heavy equipment that, uh, that, that we would have to rent otherwise.
I have to what, the, the kind of stuff that will.
And then what was the crane? The crane is like four hundred something down.
But, you know, but, but trustee Lucas also mentions that, uh, it is used by the harbor master to, you know. Get the polting out of the water. It's, it's, it does, it is used for more than just.
And for building the docks.
Yeah, it's, 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 it's a multi, it's a multi-use, multi-purpose, uh, piece of equipment.
And, and having, having it here means that, that when, when we're going to need heavy equipment to clean up, we're not going to have to rent it.
Okay, okay, so you clarified it. I thought it was just for emergency purposes.
No, 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 no. I thought it was my.
I, I get it.
Okay.
We didn't articulate it well, apologies. All right, we're, um, oh, we were gonna, did we go?
Roll call.
Roll call, okay, call the roll.
Trustees, young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Lucas?
Lucas?
Yes.
To four?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Adoption of resolution for the village dog park, that to be held again?
Um, I think HCM is having, I, I didn't, I couldn't watch the whole meeting, but I checked, they had asked, they asked staff for some additional information. And they're having, they've scheduled an extra meeting, so they're having it in August.
They're gonna have a doggo in this revolution. They're gonna come get us, all right. All right, um, old business D, resolution authorizing communication with Army Corps of Engineers on suggested revisions of the project. Uh, this is what we talked about earlier. Okay, there you go.
Did you watch the work session?
I did, which is part of why I'm standing here. Um, my name is Peggy Jackson, I'm here in sixteen sixteen North James Street in Harbor Heights, I am a member of the flood committee. I'm speaking as a resident of Harbor Heights. Um, my name was brought up at the work session meeting, I heard it because I was listening. And, um, let me just clarify my position of what was said to be clear. In two thousand and seven, five homes in Harbor Heights had water in their living quarters. I'm not talking basement, I'm talking living quarters, living, dining, kitchen, et cetera. In twenty twenty-one, there were twenty-one homes that had that level of water. So what I'm in support of is requesting that the project be tweaked, because that is the, the, um. Terminology that the Corps asks us to use. Um, I understand that you were talking about changing some of the wording in the statement in the proposal this evening. I would like to strongly request that if you are shortening the list, continuing out all whereas is, that Harbor Heights be included. In the lower section of specific requests. And that we ask the Corps in a, in conjunction with their design project, where they were talking about raising six to eight homes originally. To ask them to look at what channelizing would cost. And removing of some of the the road to nowhere or the Windfield Avenue Bridge. If it doesn't cost anymore, would that give the greater number of residents relief? Because it would be very difficult if you were a resident and you were not one of the eight to ten homes being lifted. And you got no relief from this project. What we would like to see happen is the largest number of residents get relieved across the village. And that's the, the point of tweaking, asking to tweak the project. Project was based on flood in two thousand and seven. Twenty twenty-one flood is much more severe. And the point is to ask the Corps to look into whatever modifications can be made without delaying. Without changing the project substantially, which will help the greatest number of businesses and residents. So that is what I would like to have added as a resident. Um, and I also do understand that there is a piece of, um, there's another trailer adjacent to the river. Which, as we know, in Ida, the trailer broke loose and blocked the new lane bridge. Uh, I was under the impression that we were not going to leave anything in.
That's, that's a trailer on, we, uh, up on wheels, right? Yeah, yeah.
Shouldn't, shouldn't it be that nothing be left, because of what happened last Monday, we, we were a heartbeat away from having another catastrophe. Um, it doesn't seem to make sense that we leave any large, any, anything at all in the floodway that could float down.
All right, but that, that, that's not a, that's not something that's, that's not a storage container sitting on the ground, like the other thing. This is, this is a, this is a vehicle that somebody could hook up to and.
So let's throw it away and put it to somebody that's going to hear a flood. That's my point, let's store them somewhere else.
I, I don't know, uh, why it's there and, uh, it's, it's a, it's a parking lot.
It's.
I understand it's a parking lot, but there, there are parking lots and maybe there, there are better places to store. Maybe that should be looked at.
All right, thanks, all right, um, we have wording on this. Oh, hmm? Okay, sure, sure.
Before I start my three minutes, which I'll go over anyway.
Oh, yeah.
I got a couple of questions for.
I didn't.
Our attorney, you know, we're all talking about, um, cause. And you mentioned that the state defines cause. I wonder if you had that definition, so we all know what it meant. And my second thing is, you apparently, I, I looked at the work session last week. I was completely confused on the two different laws that are in conflict. And usually when a board gets something like that, their attorney goes to the state and has the state tell the board. Which is the primary law that they have to follow. I don't know if you've done that.
Did that?
Yeah.
The, uh, attorney general punted it to the Board of Elections, the Board of Elections has responded.
Wonderful.
So the court will decide. There you go.
All right. So go for it, Paul Ryan, I live at three fourteen Livingston. But for about thirty years plus, I lived at one thirty-nine Waverly Ave, right in the middle of the flood district. My father-in-law, Tony Pagola, was, was very involved in flooding projects. He helped to start the Washingtonville Neighborhood Program, which I was an officer. There are people in the village that think that, that nothing's been done on flood control. We, the villagers have been working on this, I made a presentation in nineteen eighty-two to the board. It's funny, I'm, I'm coming here right after Susie Oppenheimer came here.
May I see that?
Dan has got a copy. I asked him to make copies for the board.
I'm just curious.
When it goes into the losses on Hurricane Eloise, you know, back in seventy-five was in seventy-two. So we've been, you know, going through this for a long time. Uh, we were able, I think, working with the Lowes office to take in upstream conditions, which would, you know, help us on the cost benefit ratio of the underburn. What scares me now, you know, you've got people talking about the dams and the reservoirs and everything else. If anything is done on those before the project has a shovel in the ground. They could turn around and reduce that cost benefit ratio and kill the whole project, as two presidents have done. You know, first Jimmy Carter and this last one. So I'm all in favor of tweaking what we have now, which is a good ten to twenty-year-old plan. It's not up to date, as the young lady Miss Cartman has said, and as, uh. Susie Oppenheimer said to the, uh, to the county.
Time, sir. I'm sorry, finish your thought.
Pardon?
Uh, you, you time's up, but finish your sentence.
Okay. I'm for the tweaking. I had a discussion with, with, excuse me, I had a discussion with Dan Natchez on his contacts with the Corps. And they, you know, if you want to repeat that, what you told me about meeting the general and the colonel.
All right, thank you, sir, thank you, sir. Hello?
Hello, I'm Ellen Helpman, I'm a member of the Budget Committee, I'm speaking as a resident.
Hi, hello.
I live on Chestnut Avenue in Harbor Heights. I agree with what Peggy said, I agree with what Paul said, we do need to tweak the plan. Since that plan was done, there's been a lot more development in the village. Complete with the house in Harbor Heights that never should have been built in a flood zone, that has caused all of us love damage. Separate from the plan, even to be done after shovels in the ground. Landell Avenue, known as the road to nowhere, has to go. That's Harrison's road, we need to work with them, that has to go, that just causes so much flooding. The, we flood on Chestnut, the water doesn't go over the retaining wall, it jumps at the road to nowhere. And then floods our properties into our homes and it causes a damming effect for North James, it's gotta go. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Sam Bruce, she had a, I live at sixteen twelve North James Street. I live in St. Maggie, and we live across the street from the road to nowhere. So I can send out pictures of what I emailed. That's a picture from Tuesday night, and I know I emailed the mayor, the board, the flood committee. To which, um, sad to say, no one responded to my email. Um, that was last Tuesday, if you look at that level, that was at seven o'clock at night. At four thirty in the afternoon, when I got home from work. That brook was about three or four feet lower than it is in that picture. If we had any more rain that night, it's coming over. And as Ellen said, that creates that second river that goes down to Ellis and Chestnut. And again, there was a house built on Ellis that never should have been built, that's backing the water up to North James. Backing it up to Irving, backing it up to Winfield. We can't live like this anymore. I've lived in my home almost my entire life, it's my parents' home. The development that's going on north of us and the development that's gonna go on around the corner from the Water Works, where they're gonna develop that land. Is gonna kill us. So this is the first time I ever had more than six feet of water in my basement, it was in the first floor of my home. It, it's, I, I, the village isn't doing anything to reduce any of our taxes. Um, it, it's, it's getting crazy, so somebody, it has to do something. You guys have to, the, the Army Corps project is gonna, we all understood when they spoke, it's gonna start downstream, they have to start downstream, it makes sense. But none of the Army Corps project is for up in Harbor Heights.
No, it's not.
No.
Nothing is being done up there.
And, and, and it's not to say that that's not an issue that we don't, we don't, we don't need to deal with, we need to deal with, but it's not that. That, that, I mean, that's.
Understood, we, we, but it, but, look, if you, the, the Army Corps knows about the road to nowhere. So I don't know why that can't be presented in a tweakage of their plan.
Well, I'm sorry, the, they initially presented the plan years ago, we were told by the then project manager, the entire. That that has to come out anyway, because they couldn't get the equipment down, that's not in writing. I think we would all feel a lot better if that was baked into the plan.
Well, can you say the planes that coming up to Harbor Heights, elevating six to eight homes?
We, we understand.
And, and when, and when asked, and when asked the gentleman who was running the plan at the, um, at that point from the Army Corps. And we were talking about the six homes and eight homes, and I said, I could potentially be one of those homes. At that point, I didn't flood in my first floor, and I'm pretty high up, for those of you who know my house. Who thought it was ever gonna reach my first floor of my home? Um, I said, well, if, instead of raising my home, can we do other things, like moving the mechanicals upstairs? And he said, that would definitely be something that the Army Corps.
Would consider.
Would listen to and consider, and then utilize that money somewhere else, um.
Understand, I do have a question, oh, on the sector. Do you know whether, on the other side, on the Harrison side, just past?
The road?
Just past the road, whether it overflowed the bank, is that bank that's lower?
People got hit in ours, yes, in our homes, yes. We could see it from.
From this picture, you mean?
No, no, I can't, I can't see it from this picture.
No, 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 you mean the day of, of Ida?
Yeah, no, not I, I know, I, I'm talking about.
Oh, no, not, not, nobody, no, the water, that's what I'm saying, if we had any more water, yes.
Okay, no, the reason I ask is the bank on the Harrison side, let's say across from Warren Park, is actually lower than the bank on the village side.
I.
So I would.
They sit higher, yeah, they're, the whole, I would say they're higher. At the Harrison side, I'll say, yeah, they're much higher and further back.
They're further back than, they're further back.
The, the houses are further back, but the, the bank is lower, is what I.
The bank is lower, but the other thing is, because of that obstruction there.
Yeah.
That for North James.
I understand.
And for Urban, uh, for Urban and for Winfield. That road is killing us.
I, I understand.
I mean, as you get down to.
It's, it's, it's awful, and, and, and it's, it's something that, it's something that, um, that the mayors tried to, uh, address with, with Harrison. And Harrison just seems to not want to be, to do anything, we're gonna have to do bilateral, um.
So there.
Uh, communications of some kind, uh, just as we're doing with, um, uh, with the, the town of Ryon, uh, Beaver Swamp Creek. Uh, we, we just, uh, we're, we're, we're communicate, we're, um, this week, right, Dan, we're putting, we're putting a, uh, a proposal together to, to. Pay, pay for some of the dredging, next year's dredging on Beaver Swamp Creek. But, uh, the, the, there's a lot of, there are a lot of moving parts, I mean, that.
But I can't imagine that the Harrison residents in the midfield land section and the those that go along West Street by the, by the park. I cannot imagine that they would say, oh, let's not do something up there in their own units, for their own units.
We, we, we need to get them activated, but there is a proposal on the, to the board work session for a resolution asking Harrison to join us.
Yeah.
Okay.
All, all right, um, uh.
Can you repeat?
Uh, we were past three minutes here, right? Uh, we, we can't, we can't let this evolve, I'm losing control of the meeting, all right?
Okay, okay.
I have spoken with the head of the flood committee in Harrison. They are willing to work with our flood committee to then take it to the Harrison board.
And get to it, please.
But regardless, we would like to see something put into this resolution for the Army Corps.
We'll, 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 we'll talk about the, the wording right now.
And can you also work with Harrison about the development around water, because that's.
That's, that, that's not what we're talking about here, let, let's, 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 let's.
What people.
Let us move on, please, yes, Laura.
Laura Body, I'm part of the Traffic Commission, I live at one seventy Washington Street, I am speaking as a lifelong resident of the village. The Army Corps of Engineers has been going back and forth and entertaining us quite some time. What I'm most concerned about is a comprehensive plan. And if comprehensive, then I'm not speaking to, in regard to the village's comprehensive plan. We have this tweet that we're trying to present to the Army Corps, but I think that we have to have. A real conversation with the Army Corps and let them get here to start this, this task. Because we in parallel have the same situation in the floods, maybe twofold, we have a private tanker station that is acted as a dam. We have buildings that should never have been lifted out of the flood plain. We have a, a brook that should be barrierred by fifty feet by law. Nothing on those streams and brooks flowing in and causing contamination and causing, causing damming. And I don't know how the Army Corps is gonna handle this situation when they actually come to do the work. And I don't know how this would affect them by giving them the tweaks that we're presenting, rather than giving them this. Kind of bigger, more global, comprehensive Q and A. And bringing them here and having a walk talk with them and letting them look at it again, even though they're in the design. I mean, I just think that there are, are bigger items that are missed and need to be more thought out. Or maybe it's our job as a village to do it in, as a parallel mitigation, rather than asking the Army Corps to handle. Some situations that maybe wouldn't be to task for them. Because they are gonna come and they are, they do know that they're behind by ten years. And they do understand that they're fighting thirty-five feet of water on Plaza Avenue that hit a brick wall and came back at us. So I, I don't know what the best solution is going to be for this globally. If there's gonna be some fallout, there might be some residents that are extremely happy with the outcome. But we really need to really basically look at getting them here quicker, rather than getting them to look at items. You know, on a list that we would like to add as a wish list, really, because the biggest wish I feel is to get them here.
Yeah.
Not two years later, but now.
Thank, thank you, Laura. All right, we, I can't remember, okay.
Uh, tweak your brains out. So be it, but, uh, we need to stop the war before it gets to America.
Okay.
It needs the dam, I know, I said it, but Lou, I sent emails to every. I sent it, but Lou, I sent emails to every board member.
That's not what we're talking about here, Bernie.
I know, but I'm just saying.
But we kinda.
I I understand that, but.
If we if we already know what you're gonna say and you already know.
But but there's no, but there's no answer, there's no feedback. I I I send you this stuff, I sent the, I sent the videos of the dam and totally got ignored.
We know, I know what the dam looks like.
The dam rose five feet within four hours with zero rain. That means it's a lot coming from up county.
Yes.
Okay, so so communicate that with me.
Uh, and 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 there's.
If you.
Jerry was gonna have have news on the, is Jerry gone now?
Uh, yeah, he's good, he has a. Be overseeing some spraying operations.
Okay, this is, well, alright.
It's a communication, I mean.
Jer-Jerry, Jerry is a, uh, yeah, he's got the uh, mosquito spraying uh, tomorrow at three AM, so that's uh, that's where he is. Um.
I'll I'll stop asking the same questions and saying the same things.
But there's there's movement, there's movement on county money for the dam. That's all I can say, he knows the details of it, okay?
With Dan, do you know the details?
Yeah, um, I mentioned, I think uh, Bernie was copying on my email. Uh, when I was finding him last week or the week before, saying that we were meeting with uh, Dave Kadinga from Worcester, he's the Assistant Commissioner of. Planning for Worcester County. Uh, and they're looking to uh, put money in their budget to uh. Start implementing and looking at flood mitigation for this watershed. Uh, which now they call it the Coastal Ohio Sound Watershed.
Yeah.
Uh, and one of the items that we spoke to him about, uh, along with uh, Mr. Parker, who was at the meeting. Was, you know, studying the potential uh, the potential for the Mariner. You know, looking like you may feel that.
And that that's that's a chunk of change, right?
Uh, it would be, it's about, the study would be a chunk of change, you know, a capstone would be a bigger chunk of change.
Okay. Alright, and and it's county money that's that's.
It's county money to fund this initial work.
Alright, so. It's.
Ron.
Are we looking at the dam as a.
Yes, the the reservoir is behind the dam, yes, we're gonna be looking at the dam. And and there there's 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 a lot of stuff going on, Bernie, I mean, but it but it's all, right? Yes.
Hi, um, I'm Kathleen McColey, I live at sixteen twenty-five Urban Street. Um, I just wanted to echo that I support the tweets, um, my husband and I moved into this home, this is our first home in um, August twenty twenty. And we had our first son in July twenty twenty-one and then we were displaced for six and a half months. Um, I know at the time that we've been there less than two years. Now, um, we've had three floods, obviously, one in our quarters and displacing us, so.
So you so you you want to tweak the tweaks because?
Because we'd really love to stay here, but.
But but what and what about the tweaks, I mean, obviously, this is a pro, this is a plan that's gonna happen. That that they're going, it's gonna be a flood mitigation project, eighty-eight million dollars. Oh, why do you think we need to tweak it?
So my husband and I are in agreement that we feel that um, reallocation of some of the floods rather than raising some houses in our neighborhood might be. It would be more effective to use those to um. Look into channelizing the river.
Okay, alright, understood. Thank you. Thank you very much.
I'm Joey Ryan, two fourteen Williamson here. In um, two thousand and seven, we had, uh, we lived at one thirty-nine Waverly Ave, we had. Eight feet of water in our basement, we said, nothing this terrible can ever happen again, just can't. And Ida. I did did what we thought would never happen again and came into the living quarters, which is where my mom lived when we lived at one thirty-nine. What happened in the years since that plan was made and and devised for our village. Has changed, I mean, there's no doubt because there were other neighborhoods that hadn't flooded before that flooded now. And that's why I think it needs to be tweaked, a plan that worked then was good for then. But what we have is new flooding in areas that never flooded before. So when you tweak it, you have to look at those areas as well. So that the whole village, the whole village is is going to be looked at, is going to be tweaked tweaked to be part of a plan. That's a fix for all of the village, we're one village, we flood everywhere now, so if you look like you have a question.
No, I I'm but but this is the Marineck Sheldonrick River Flood Mitigation Project, it's it's for a very specific thing, it's for the for where they come together and. And and that, I mean, you're talking, there's there's flooding all over and uh.
And I'm saying the plan, that plan needs to look at the new flood areas, that's part of what you need to tweak.
They 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 they're not gonna do that.
Well, you can certainly ask, how how do you know? Until you ask. I mean, you're making a list of things that you want to the, you want them to look at. And even water has a mind of its own and it does what it wants to do. The traditional areas that have been hit will always be hit. And we need to certainly take care of those and they're part of the plan, but I'm saying that there are new areas that also need to be looked at when they tweak it.
Uh, and but but so those require new efforts, new new projects, something different, not not this.
But maybe maybe they don't until you look at it, I don't know how you can answer that.
So so you would you would you you would diminish the the planet at that area?
I'm sorry?
I mean.
Well, that then I, I'm just here to say that and I do think it needs to be tweaked.
Tweak how?
I beg your pardon?
How would you like it tweaked, you know?
I'd like everything to be looked at, uh, in a in a new light based upon what we have experienced this last time.
Okay, um, I see, um, our, my fear is that we could, we could screw it up.
Well, I don't think so, I think if we ask the questions and if we do some of the projects we know we can do. While we're looking at this and tweaking it, I don't think that's gonna have a problem with them. If they know that we're a whole part of the, doing our part and doing more than our part, I think they will look at it favorably.
Thank you, thank you.
If you have your mind made up.
Thank you.
It sounds like you have.
Well, we've been dealing with this a long time and this is.
Way longer than you.
Yes, she's great.
Was that?
I mean, the Army Corps is updating some of the hydrology numbers as part of the project.
Yeah.
To, you know, see the impact of how Ida changes certain things. Uh, but you're, they're not gonna uh, look at things along the coastline. Or they're not, and they're not gonna look at things, say, in the Beaver Swamp Brook area, because that wasn't part of.
Yeah, or or Warren Park or or um.
But I stay within the footprint of the of the plan.
That we get during storm and advance the storms. Always highlights the worst hit areas and talks about Washingtonville and Harbor Heights. And this plan is not really of us. So if the village is acknowledging these are our problem areas, we need to do something. I'm not directing any of you, I apologize, but it sounded like I was.
Oh, we are, we are dredging the rivers for the first time forever.
Yeah, we we secured our permits and we uh, moving forward.
I I saw that the the permits are coming in.
Yeah, we received our permit from Worcester County, the Street Control Target. And I think that we've uh, smoothed out any uh, anything we need to with the D C.
Yeah, because I mean, the truth is, you got water in the in the, but you got nine feet of silt there too. And that's and that's been a little, we just let it build up, just to, gotta get it out of it. Yes, sir.
Uh, so uh, I served with Tony on the Board of Trustees, obviously, and and we spent a lot of time evaluating this. And one of the things that stood out in my mind is we have a sanitary sewer district. But we do not have a stormwater sewer district. And I don't understand why we don't have a stormwater sewer district. When the majority of the water is coming from up county in a four, I think it's instead of a twenty-four square. I thought it was actually forty-eight square miles, I think I think it's. Everybody's given different numbers, but I remember back that I was on the Board of Trustees, the number was much larger. And regardless. We are getting water from up county.
Sure.
I can tell you there are developments that are happening up in Harrison. Or that happened many years ago where the properties were completely denuded, hundreds of acres were denuded. And that water ends up here in Mariner. And and that's only within the last twenty years, that doesn't count all the. You know, generations of development that have happened, that have contributed to this problem.
Hmm.
So we do need. We we need you and we need Catherine, Catherine Parker.
Hmm.
To a- and the state to push for county stormwater districts.
Hmm.
So that the county, so the county is paying for this infrastructure.
That's a great idea.
That and and paying for some of the work that needs to get done on a continued basis, so.
Thank you, that's that's.
We're not continually getting cracked.
That that's that's. Listen, uh, the one, what are the things I say all the time is that we need to. We need to do, be doing everything yesterday. And it's and it's and it's true, uh, but. This.
Well, the ironic thing is during the last storm, I was driving down Palmer Avenue.
Yeah.
She dropped one of my children off somewhere. And driving down Palmer, I mean. You know, rain, bad rainstorm, but not not anything out of what we would have normally expected on Palmer Avenue. And half an hour, twenty minutes later, I'm I'm looping back. And I have an SUV, could not get through.
Oh, I I.
Could not get through and forty minutes later, I went to go get her and there was no way to get to her because she was up Rockland Hill.
The reason I was so interested in these documents from the from nineteen eighty-two was because this is about the time I first came to the Marineck as a TV reporter to cover a flood. And he said, we got a plan, you know?
Late, Lou.
Why?
That was late in nineteen eighty-two.
Yeah, I know, believe me, I know, I know, we got a plan, we got a plan, we got a plan. So that that's that's one of the reasons I'm I'm so interested in it.
So, but I mean, Steve Otis, George Latimer and Catherine Parker need to be. Encouraged to create a stormwater district for for the lower west, the lower Westchester area.
I'll have them all in one place on the fifth, so I'll be sure to, we've been to New Year.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, and and folks, I I I I mean, we all appreciate just how emotional this is for everybody, it's emotional for all of us. But um, uh, and and.